Yay. Right.
Ready?
Ready.
Six o'clock on the button. All right, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special city council meeting order for August 26th. And I'll start off with a roll call, sir.
Cody Miles here.
Joshua Hagan here.
Jesse Reed.
Yeah.
Wendy Henson.
Yeah.
Justin Calver is not present.
He's not here.
And Cliff Thompson.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Edwards.
I am here. And then I also want to recognize that the entire Water and Sewer Commission's here. Best thing to come. So this is a continuation of our last council meeting. We, and I did send you all the link, asked you to listen to it. I hope you did, and the council decided they wanted to have a special meeting with the Water and Sewer Committee. Kind of get an understanding what direction the city's gone. Address any concerns that that are had. Jeff? And I did send the list of the questions out that we started with, you know, from, you see back from council. We did a very good job of taking a lot of notes at our last meeting and putting this together, and then I think I had one or two things. So the whole purpose of this, we just want to have a conversation. You know, we, we want to, you know, our temp here is to work together. Just find out, you know, where we're going, because we, you know, we get a lot of concerns here. You know, the planning department, we're getting a lot of concerns from builders and developers, you know, wanting to know where we're at. You know, and I, I think it's fair that we, and the council, I mean, they'd like to come to the Water and Sewer Commission meetings. You know, like I stated in your last meeting, however, well, some worked during the day. So it is hard for them to come. I know I have two, they come on a regular basis. And I know we provide minutes to them, but I think this is just a good time to, to get together. I want everybody to be respectful of each other and, you know, just have a great conversation. And then, like I said, there's a list of things we want to go over. However, before I start, Bob did give us a sheet about the, yeah, Bob right there. Oh, I want to recognize Bob's art too. Hey, Bob? Name too, so you can get him in a minute. So, anyway, Bob Anderson did give us a short sheet. I don't know if you just wanted to say something briefly about this or before we start.
All right, what I did was I'll back it up, presented to you a short history of the Water and Sewer Commission. And the major, some of the major events in that that have occurred. So it's a one pager and it's purposely kept to one page. The highlights.
Thank you for doing them.
So a couple of things that I'll start with, and you all have the same form, you know, that we sent, I've got it on the screen here too, so the public can see what we got. And we'll just see how the conversation goes. So the first thing that we wanted to discuss is the wastewater contract we currently have with Decatur. Did ask Brian, do it, and the council's been provided with that contract too. And I left the last council meeting, Brian, do you want to say anything on the contract?
At this point, if, if people have specific questions, I would be happy to, to entertain those.
So I think.
I, I'll make some comments. This, this contract, a great deal of my party went with. But it was a pioneering contract for the state of Arkansas. And we tried to structure that contract to be fair to both parties, but to allow for changes in the future. And after having been with this contract now about 11 years, 12 years, we can see that we need to perhaps change, you know, strengthen it in some places. And so that will become a major topic of discussion between the commission and our, our staff and the mayor of Decatur. Right, do they? It's a, we're, we're gonna be working on it. It only took about two and a half years to get this contract written. Basic contract. About almost two years of it was the lawyers trying to write it. We got some, one of the ground people working on it, and we got it done in six months. It's a functioning contract. It goes well, we can improve it. And that's where we're, we're going, we're working on. It's not something that happens in 30 days or 60 days. It may take us several months.
Perhaps something I'd like to add is just in general with the situation with our wastewater capacity at Decatur. Decatur's done a good job getting in compliance with the headworks. Yeah, Mayor Tharp has continued to to work on that, to get that up and running to the ADQ standards, right? The reality of our situation is, yes, what's on the books is going to be taken up potentially by the future 5.25. However, we think about that over the course of time, that is really getting us two years down the road, because when we get up to speed, it's going to take six to eight homes for the first homes to finally get finished and hit the market, right? And so for the full backlog to get constructed is really going to take an additional 18 months after that. So we're not at capacity, right? And then ADQ is not looking at the, the future projected flows. They're looking at what is the flows at the plant? How is it operating? Like, how is it actually functioning? So when we send less waste to the plant, we'll be able to extend that time period out a little bit longer, right? So we may actually have really two to three years with the plan that's in place right now. What that does is allow us time, and allows us time to work with Decatur and other entities to create the right structure. I know some of the questions are about who, what are the finances? What, what's this going to look like? Well, we don't know yet. And I think one of the things that we as a commissioner are going to look at is either executing our own preliminary engineering report, where we hire an outside consultant to evaluate the 30-year cost cycle of what is upgrading Decatur look like? What does it look like to go to Decatur and to NACA? What does it look like to have a regional entity, right? So that we can make an informed financial decision, right? Because the, the reality is, I don't think we have all the facts to make that informed financial decision today, right? But it's also not something we have to make tomorrow. We have to start working on it right now, right? And I would like you to know that our commission is working on that, right? So just to help kind of put that in perspective, that the, the plan is in place to get going of that, right? Like, it's not that we've spent standing idly by. So just wanted to add.
One, one thing to add to that too, you know, Mayor Tharp gave a very good detailed explanation what's happened in Decatur at our last council meeting, and I think, I hope y'all heard it on there. And he's already, well, last week it was six weeks, so he's probably seven weeks into future expansion there. So at some point, I know he, he did indicate that this upgrade is happening now, they are going to take care of, but at some point, we're going to need to participate. And, you know, that conversation is that we all need, and I want to make sure the council's involved with those decisions too. You know, as, as we talk through, you know, NACA or Decatur or whatever, because there was, at the end of the day, it's going to approve the financing for that, if you're doing bonds or whatever. I want to make sure they are, you know, fully aware of, of what we're doing, because you know, one thing that I get sitting in this chair every day is I hear about water bills every day. Not, not recently, but, you know, and I, I mean, the reality is, we know we're going to pay for this. But, you know, we just got to be cautious if we're going to go to NACA, we're going to go to Decatur, we're going to try to do both. The ratepayers end up going to pay for this, so we better keep our ratepayers in line too. And I, and I know you will. I just want to kind of just put that out there and on the record, because like I said, we do hear about that.
And as it regards rates, there was a new act that was pushed through the legislation this past year. So similar to the water side, where we have to have rate studies done on a timely basis, now we have to do that on the sewer side as well. So regardless of rate studies happening because we think it's the right thing, we're going to now be required by law to execute it. And so that's going to force us to raise rates to keep up with the operational costs. One of the potential concerns of the Decatur contract is the price that we actually pay to Decatur. It's pretty cheap. So that's just a fact. It's a good deal for us.
Because I remember when I sat on this council and we looked at NACA before, it was like four times higher, you know, per thousand, and that was just our rate. And I think it's, I don't know what it is today. I know Malcolm's doing research on that. I don't know if that's still the case. I know that I went with Frank to a meeting with Mayor McCaslin down there, and he showed me on the screen, because he was trying to get us to go there, and he says, Senator's portion would be 1285 a thousand. That's just our cost. You know, I think we paid 388 a thousand to, the last contract I looked, I think it's 388 to Decatur. So it's four times higher to go there. And I, and I know Judy and I sat on the council together with NACA CAE, so you know, that's, that's, that's a big, that's a concern of mine anyway, the, the cost.
We have, we have multiple options that we're looking at. One of them is going to Decatur. And we'll get into this a little bit later, but to connect, to connect to Deca, not Decatur, to connect to NACA, they're going to charge us a $10 million connection fee. And that allows us to discharge a half a million gallons per day of, of sewer to. We go over that, then they kick it up another five million for another 250,000. Is that right?
No.
So. Okay, and if we go a million a day, then they're going to kick it up to $20 million. Their cost, I mean, and plus it would cost us several million dollars to run the lines and actually do the connection. So we're looking at 15 billion or so to connect in that gun. Minimum. So that's one option that we're looking at. We got to look, as we look at that, we got to look at what that does to Decatur. We connect to, if we connect to NACA, then it can, it could affect Decatur's ability to finance the next big leg of, of improving Decatur. But we got to examine that and take that into account. The other option is connect to, to Decatur and, and improve their plant, improve the capacity of their plant. Okay? There, they told us ever since February that we should have a 5.25 million gallon limit, okay? They should be up, upgrading it from 3.8 to 5.25, which will take everything we have on the books right now.
That's end of year. I'm sorry, I don't mean that.
End of the year.
Okay.
Tell us since, since February, about the end of the year. There was some talk in the last city council meeting that the contractors have never been given a timeline, and that's just totally false. We've been telling them since February, the end of the year, this should be approved. Okay, now, at the same time I say that, I will say, we don't have control over that time. That timeline is up to AD, it, pardon the health. So if, if you guys know how government works, they work on their own time schedule, and you're not going to rush them. We could, we wouldn't be here, but we'd already get this done. The, the other option is to, is to increase the capacity of Decatur beyond that, and I think the next step they're talking about either 10 or 12 and a half million gallons a day or something like that. But that's going to take some major discuss, uh, uh, major construction. So they're looking at that. The other option that we were looking at is allowing, allowing
Decentralized.
Decentralized sewer processing plants. And they just passed a bill through the state legislature that shoots that down. We can't do that. We actually voted on that in a, in a, in a meeting a month, a little over a month ago, to allow them to explore that and come back and ask for a permit and, and us grant them the ability to do that. And then the legislation was passed that shoots that down, and we're not, no longer have that as an option. So we've got two major options there. And what we had to consider is, if we go to NACA, what's it going to do to Decatur and their ability? And we had a finance guy in our last special meeting that we had, or
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting that we had, we had a finance guy that says it could affect Decatur's ability to get a bond issued. For that big expansion. So we got to take that in consideration as well. The other option we found is to, to try to form a regional sewer processing plant. Looking at that also and talking with Mayor Tharp and some about that. But we're looking at all three options. We're trying to decide which one's the best for us. Which one's the best for this region?
And to echo that, the two solutions kind of described and outlined there. Splitting some flow to NACA and some to Decatur. It's not all Centerton flow goes to NACA. It would be splitting our drain, sewer drainage basins, the way they naturally drain. It'd be more the southern half of the community would go to NACA. And most of the built out northern half would continue to go to Decatur. So it's not cutting off one or the other. And that's where the long range, 30-year operation and maintenance could come into play, because right now, if we were to just go the full route of Decatur, we will be locking ourselves into pumping wastewater up to two to three times. Right now, we're pumping wastewater twice. You never really want to pump wastewater twice. That's, you know, that's more electricity we're running things like this, right? So we have the option to not pump it twice. We can pump it maybe just once to one or two locations. So that's where the O and M cost over a 30-year lifecycle may have an effect on those cost differences between the two solutions. But we have, haven't engaged with anybody yet to analyze that great detail, and that's what we need to get done.
I have a question. One other point I'd like to make is to go to NACA. Besides the 10 to 15 million dollars it would cost us to connect, NACA can't tell us what our rates would be. Because it's completely dependent on what kind of construction and, and what they want to do to their planet, for the entire system. So if they want to improve Bentonville or Rogers or Springdale area, then they can improve those areas. We're going to help pay for it. And they can't tell us what our rates are going to be.
They're going to take gamble essentially.
Gambles. You're exactly right. I know you guys are interested in rates, and so are we.
That's, that's why we're
That's why we're, we're at right now.
That's a question. Yeah, sure, sure, absolutely.
So we, we talked about the contract a little bit, and then we started talking about plans. The question I have is in the contract, there's a section on capital planning. You guys have access or copied the original five-year plan that was developed? And then the annual reviews and revisions that were done for the last 11 years?
Unfortunately, as Mayor Tharp has talked about, there's a lack of communication. Bang, spell it through the crap.
And that's why we're here today, because we haven't had plans 12 years into the contract. So, I mean, you guys are throwing out a lot of ideas that could potentially be plans that should have been thought about five years ago. I saw something here from July of 22. The ESI produced for you all. It says long-range plan reduced PDF. So I don't know if this is the complete report, but it reads more like a annual report than a plan. So seems to me like we, we, we kind of got off the rails 12 years ago when we started this process, and we haven't planned for anything. And now we're just, we've kicked the can all the way to the end of the road, and now we're trying to throw things at the wall and see what sticks.
We've not had the best planning.
Is that a bad assessment?
Not not that we've not planned. We've just had a hard time planning far enough ahead. Having the vision to get far enough ahead.
Five years was the contracted agreement for capital planning. And if you do that correctly, you would initiate that five-year plan. Then the next year, you would check off what you completed, and you would extend it a year when you revise it. So the next question is, how do you budget what your goals are for the year if you have no plan? That plan should drive what your budget expenditure should be.
It's true. I in 2015, the commission had established its first long-range plan.
Three years late.
Five years, yeah. 2015. They established a 25-year plan. 2016, we sat down to review project forward. We discovered we'd done everything on that list. So we started trying to figure out how further out do we go? Each year, we've been trying to get bigger and bigger. We last couple of years, we've been branding out five years, six years, what we think we're going to be there. But you know.
It's not easy to, to plan out the growth of this city.
Right.
Uh, we do a long-range planning, and we sit down and review it every year. I, I think I can say, you know, there, there is, has been a lack of communication between the long-range plan for the sewer treatment plant and Centerton where it was. And that's not Mayor Tharp. It may be his predecessor. Mayor Tharp's been pretty good at communicating where we are and, and where we need to go since, since he's been in office. We've been working with him. So that, that's improved since he's been where the lack of communication was, was, was pre-Major Tharp in, in the first few years of his contract. When everything was running smoothly and we had no idea what the capacity issue was, Centerton or, or that we were getting close to.
According, and I have a question too, if that's okay. Because I have written down several based on the contract. My first part of the question is, how did we get here? Like, I remember last year when I was campaigning, it was about in the middle of the summer last year, and everybody was just really nervous about where we were. And, and I was still learning a lot of that. But according to the contract, it says that our cities were to talk annually. So if that's the case, I don't, Mayor Tharp, how long have you been in office?
Just lack of communication, death. If you want to keep going, we keep talking about lack of
I, I'm just wondering.
Already, we've already admitted to that. There's been a lack of communication.
Okay.
We, we are, we are currently meeting monthly.
I, I wanted to add to that. So I said, I don't want, please don't take this defensively. The most important part is, is when we establish these relationships with other cities, NACA grateful for, for Decatur to offer us an option, because the other options were way more expensive. My concern is with this contract, we've not fully on either side. I mean, we've not been contributing financially to Decatur either. To me, the relationship is extremely important. And with that being said, as we prepare for whether we go to NACA or we go to Decatur again, if this is already an issue, we move forward and make sure this doesn't continue to happen. Like, what steps are we going to take to ensure that we're communicating regularly? Because it's at the demise of our, our developers and, and residents that want to have a more robust city, a city that's, that's operating well.
The thing, we've already, we've already taken steps. One of them is sitting right here. He, he's here at this meeting, leaving our meeting every month. If we meet with him at any place, every month. So we've already taken steps to improve it.
And from a contract standpoint, the items that potentially should be considered to be added to this contract are written down limits to say, hey, Centerton can send X million gallons a day. If we go over that limit, there is potentially a penalty or a harm, right? I understand that what I'm saying is we're making this contract less in favor of the city of Centerton. But it's those types of things that help us project and look out for the future, because we can say, oh, look, hey, we giving ourselves a little bit more control of the situation to say, hey, we're, we're pushing up against our limit, right? Because, yes, one of the items on here is the flows of Centerton and potentially a, a large commercial user for Decatur. Well, we, we can't really control that or have any say of that, you know? The commercial user is a customer of the city of Decatur, and that's up to the city of Decatur to manage. That's how it is written and negotiated right now, right? And so if we had in writing that we could send them 3 million gallons a day, then we don't, that, that's one way to approach this, right? To help that in the future, so that we as the city of Centerton don't get stuck. Potential other option is the regional wastewater authority. That they could take ownership of the plant, really? That doesn't really change any of the day-to-day operations, right? Who's the best suited person around that plant? Well, it's going to be James Boston at the city of Decatur, because it, you know, he knows everything about it. But if we have a, a structured entity that could take control of it, well, now we have more mechanisms to add future flow, add other municipalities. We're not the only municipality struggling with this, right? Potentially Gravit, potentially Gentry, right? And then we could create a, a board to sit on, and then we can influence that board and have better planning abilities, right? And part of the problem of the, this contract right now is the city of Decatur is controlling, because they're just trying to make stuff happen, and rightfully so. The, the contracts of all sub-consultants and everything like that, right? That's an area I would love to see us have more influence and involvement in, in selection of sub-consultants and review of things like this. So those are, those are my thoughts of how we can make this contract help us.
So those are all admirable goals. So my question is, how long will it take to get those into a written document with strategic objectives to achieve them, that we can publish for the citizens in a five-year plan? And we can talk about what we want to see and what we want to do, but until we commit to it, establish those goals and identify how we get there. We'll be here next year, speaking about all these wonderful ideas.
Step one, in my opinion, is a preliminary engineering report that we hire as Centerton Utilities, an outside consultant, to look at those options financially, so that we know which way to put our efforts and energies. And that's a process that could take four to six months after execution of, of professional services agreement. That's step one.
Seems like there needs to be a, a pretty comprehensive strategic planning session by whoever needs to be there. Squad analysis, if you've ever heard of that, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. What are we doing good? What are we struggling with? What's on the outside that's going to hurt us? Opportunities back us and threats to our system. When you can get that stuff figured out, get it written down, needs to be published on the website, so the public can go there and see what the plans are, where are we headed? Because right now, there's nothing. I'll leave that horse alone.
The only other thing I want to add on this contract, which I've heard conversation about is you know, percentage is, you know, for future upgrades, how much is Centerton going to be on hook for? We have, or have, are we just the 33% of the flow we do? And that'd be something we have to talk to, I mean, we can't have the decision today, but and this is part of what, there's a provision in the contract that calls for establishment of the baseline. That baseline then becomes the driving allocation. Well, for the development. Baseline was set for the existing plant. And as it goes up, then they'll have, you know, baseline will have to be reestablished. Major addition, enhance the baseline. Okay? And so the ability to do it is there. And that's for rest. Well, I guess my only concern is if, you know, probably need to spell that clearly. What percentage we're going to be responsible for, because if we're responsible for half of the, half of it, then we'd be getting 50% of the flow. If we're all responsible 33, you know, and that's something that's been negotiated and talked about, but I want to make sure that, that's not overlooked. Because like I said, if we're a 50-50 partner, then we should be getting 50% of the flow.
The night, Mayor, we should be contributing 50% of the cost.
Yeah, yeah, we're not about to speak that. Yep, you're right.
You've been doing that.
Baseline, it was a stab. Centerton was 37%, Decatur was 63%. Latest data that I've seen says, well, we're just getting that baseline is continued. Percentage, percentage is
Bill is saying.
They just say, I see 33 to 36, depending on flow, so.
All right, I just want to make sure that, you know.
Hey, Don, I got a couple of questions for you. Just, I want to hear your opinion on some things that have been stated. Uh, because I respect you and your, I respect all of you, but I have a good relationship with you. TJ. TJ. TJ had stated that in the new contract, I'm going to say two questions and you can answer. In the contract, he stated that it would be a good idea for us to limit what we send to Decatur. I just want to know how you think that, whether you think that would really help us? Yes or no on that?
I'm not sure that's what he meant. He, he wants a he wants a, a volume that we're allowed to send before penalized and before charged on, on overage fees, something like that. Not necessarily a limit.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand how that helps the city of Centerton. I know you said it may not help us. Why would we go there? I don't think, I don't think Decatur's asking for us to go there.
Things, or from a management standpoint.
Well, from a, and, and it goes along the same, same lines as the percentage that the mayor's talking about, that 37% that Bob mentioned.
How do you feel about establishing a separate board, such as, from the way I understand it, it's like the water that comes in with Beaver, Beaver Authority? The board, how do you, how, what is your opinion on establishing?
How about establishing a, a, a About establishing a a a regional. That's what the state recommends, that's what the state wants to go to.
The state wants to go to the regional.
State wants to go to regional, regional processing plants. And.
How's that?
What they had in mind whenever they sent us to Decatur is eventually one day that that it would be a regional plant.
That would be the site of a regional plant.
And we would have, we have board members that would make decisions.
Yeah, we we would have a position on the board that would be involved in decision making.
Okay. And, uh.
One of the, that's one of the potential things that we're exploring.
And I know that with the state's recommendation. Does that really benefit the city of Centerton to create a board with multiple municipalities?
Benefited the city of Centerton to send us. Instead of letting.
Say again, this is.
Sewer plant. But that's the state.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sure it benefited Centerton for them to send us there.
Okay.
Instead of allowing us to to, uh, uh, build and and have our own sewer treatment plant. But they wouldn't allow us to do that.
I agree with that statement.
That takes us back to two thousand and three, two thousand and four.
Yeah, probably. I moved here in two thousand and nine, and the first thing that happened is you got done a big ditch through my yard.
Big ditch. Welcome you to Centerton.
The, uh, this, this, I may want ESI's involvement in this, uh, question. It was, it's been a year ago or close to it, where we all sat down individually as commissioners. And we discussed the five or six options. That we were looking at, um, including the Decatur and the other options. John has brought up the cost of multiple, but I've also heard that we don't have that, uh, available. What's been the holdup, because I would figure this would have been an emergency. You know, this would have been looked at as an emergency and we needed to get the cost done. What's been the holdup on figuring out that cost within this last year?
Figuring out the cost of what, going to?
The connect, the different options connecting to NACA, I know Bentonville got kiboshed, um, and then also. Maybe investing more money in Decatur as an option, instead of fifteen million to NACA. To help Decatur get out, maybe start a partnership there. Instead, uh, so that's why I'm just wondering, the cost of. Getting the ditches, the cost of putting the pipe, the cost of doing whatever we need to connect. Because the only numbers I've heard today are the same numbers I've heard for a while, uh, on the one to connect to NACA, but I know that's not the.
Well, I think one of the things that that. That you're talking about is the timeline here, and the and the timeline was shorter for, uh, Decatur to get theirs online than it would have for us to be able to connect to NACA. Uh, and submit plans for the cost and stuff like that and get, um. ADH to approve those. Because they have to approve those too. So actually, the quickest plan was to do what we're doing, and that's to go and to increase, uh, Decatur's. Low capabilities. And go and stay there.
Maybe I misheard earlier, when we talked about the other plants and stuff that.
I think what I'm referring to is. We don't have the financial numbers to really holistically evaluate what is the best financial solution for the city of Centerton. For the next twenty years, right? The past six months, we've been trying to make sure that we solve the today problem, right? And so I think what Don is saying is the today problem, we have the solution. And it's moving forward. And to answer Mr. Thompson's question of, we haven't really evaluated, what is the real answer for the next fifteen, twenty years? And so I guess what I'm saying is, we need to begin that work to analyze what is the best financial option for the next fifteen to twenty years. And we don't have those costs, the real numbers of what it's going to take. But operate, maintain our wastewater system for the next twenty to thirty. So how can we make a decision if we don't have that?
The, we know, sorry. Well, I just have one more question along that, uh, that I've kind of alluded to, but I just want to know, in the discussions, is the commission thinking about or. Keeping as an option to invest in Decatur's wastewater.
Sure.
Oh, absolutely.
And make full partner in it.
Absolutely.
What has been the response to that?
That's the regional, it's part of the regional plan, two ways we can invest in Decatur, become a regional partner. Or invest in Decatur's plant. You know, to guarantee that we have the capacity.
What would be the commission's opinion on? They would figure which would be better, regional partner and or investing directly with Decatur? What would our opinion be? Yeah, uh, you, y'all are looking at it.
Well.
We're professional.
I haven't to look at that. Okay? And, uh, and both parties have to be in agreement.
Yeah. Bob, what would you want?
You want me to speak to all that?
I'd be happy to hear your.
But most recognized me, I'll be glad.
Well, Bob, come up here to us so we can see it. I can see you, but.
Well, I recognize.
You look like the mayor.
I'd also like to ask a question that maybe he can answer as well. It tends to, have a lot of money to go back to, with the timeline. And are we looking at the timeline and the financials to determine? Which which point is going to be more, um, efficient to? You know, to go to for a long term? Is that part of the equation, I guess, is my question to you.
Taking that, Mayor? Can I, can I throw one more quick question?
We could just like instead of.
I'm just curious with the upgrades in December and the backlog of projects in cities. How much, how long do we anticipate that capacity to last be like in this position before we can upgrade again?
Okay, that's a good question. The question is, how long will we go after we get done with these upgrades? Everything that's in your queue, the city of Centerton, and everything that's in queue, city Decatur can be done. On the day we get the permit and we go to, we go, we start taking more. Uh, slug, flood, flood to us, the day we begin that, that's where it is. So after our meeting with the city council was a few days ago. I have now put together what I believe to be a long term plan using. Uh, twenty five thousand population in the city of Centerton, using a seven point two percent increase annually. And in ten years, you're going to be at fifty thousand people at least, that's what my, my documentation says. And so we believe that talking to my engineering company, which I'm already working with. Uh, we believe that it should take us to a ten MGD plant. And, uh, so from, at that point, for sure, for sure. We're going to be asking help from Centerton, but we may be asking help from Centerton. Before that happens. But just because you said that, well, and I've said that before, and I told Malcolm the same thing, that we're going to try to take care of this expansion. And we've got seventeen million dollars that we've either found or saved, that we're spending every day of the week right now, so. We believe that we can handle that, but we may want to come back and talk about that, but for sure, the next expansion. We're at about thirty eight percent of our flow right now. City of Decatur is the rest. The contract, the contract says two parties, that's the city of Centerton and the city of Decatur. This is the way it is. We talked about. Building a bigger plant, becoming a regional plant. That is our goal, to build a big plant and a bigger plant. We have no anticipation that the city of Gentry or, uh, Gravit. Wants to become a party to us, we have not heard from them that they want to send a pipeline. So we, we're just taking them as, we're not even considering that. So looking at the, at the contract, been some discussion about the. Uh, changing the way we do operations, the contract that clearly says. That if the city of Decatur becomes unable or unwilling. To take the flow that it needs to from the city of Centerton and our customers. At that point, then the establishment of that commission can be walking forward. So nobody's looking at that commission being changed. Nobody's looking. Mr. Anderson, to change in the contract, to my knowledge, unless I was asleep in a meeting. Nobody's, we haven't been talking about changing the contract, we recognizes there's some weaknesses in that contract. And the first weakness was, and I was a city councilman when this was voted on. And we did not catch that there was a limit, and I've admitted to that from day one, when I started going to the commissioners. That there's not a limit in that contract, and that's a bad deal, that needs to be changed. So. How did we get here? We got here because Mayor Bob. Pretty much was asleep at the switch, but I didn't know how fast you were growing and how much was coming. Then all of a sudden, and I've admitted this before to you all and to the commission. Then all of a sudden, I go, what in the world's going on? So I started coming to the commissioner meeting. Josh was on that board when I was there, I'm coming, and I go, my goodness, what is happening? So then I spent a lot of time reading this contract. The contract, I think, is a good contract, I think there's some areas that could be beefed up and changed. But do we want to go into negotiation on a contract at this stage of the game? It's all up in the air, I don't think so, I would hate to see that happen. I believe what you need to do is give your commitment to Decatur. And I'm spending lots of money in Decatur, and I'm going to get this up to five point three six MGD plant. And we're going to take care of business, but we're not asleep anymore. We're already planning for the future.
We've filed this a little bit, you you confirmed that when this is done in December, everything that's pending, we covered. But at your seven percent rate of growth, at what point will that capacity be full before we can upgrade again? Maybe one year that we can build or?
I I believe we're going to be good enough. To get the plant built in two years, and that means double the size of the plant.
That'll be useful to do that in a.
Yes, so let's talk about financing. A lot of talk about financing, some talk about bonds. I'm just going to tell you that I have bond, these bonds in place, and I have investors in place. And I would really encourage you to really think about going to NACA. Because my investors that have their money seated in that, they don't have to stay with that. And I don't want to get them nervous right now. I would rather that we point toward doing something together. I'm going to finance through the state of Arkansas, I've already got McClellan Industries working for me. And, um, we're going to find the money, if we can't, guess what? I'm going to come back to this commission and say, you know, Decatur can't do it, so now we have to do a commission. And then the advantage of the commission is that the commission is going to be, not be tied to an industry or a commercial business. They're going to be able to borrow more money than what we are. But that takes that, that takes the, the day to day operations that we've done for thirty, forty years in Decatur, running sewer plant. That takes up, changes things up. Would be a benefit, well, it might be, I wouldn't get these like that calls, what I, I wouldn't worry about how I'm going to pay for a pump. I wouldn't worry about how I'm going to pay for, uh, components go into the, into the wastewater, so it works well. I wouldn't have to worry about tariffs, we made almost four hundred thousand dollars extra because of the tariffs. That was placed on us, on the membranes that had to come in, so my point is. I think we're okay. And you brought up a while ago, what happened to these communication, the contract clearly says, one year after. The institution of this contract, we were supposed to be seeing weekly meetings and daily meetings, weekly meetings and daily meetings. And that did not happen except verbally, and that was happening there. That was happening between Frank Hooskemper and James Boston. And it was at a formal meeting, sometimes it was, and sometimes it wasn't, sometimes I got into the meeting when they were meeting, so I know we were having some meetings early on.
I think the contract states that the weeklys could be. Oh, hopefully your problems be fixed to face.
They did it, they did it. So early on, that's.
One of the first conversations, because we were building, you know, behind a Decatur, right? The first couple of years of this contract was getting there. And so there, I know there were a lot of conversations, because we talked about it a lot as a, as a council.
So somewhere, we just. Lost our way, both of us did. Mayor, you and I both did, it's our cities, somewhere we just lost it. And now we're trying to pick it up, put it back together, I think we're well on the road to do that. I, so as soon as we get approved by the health department. And that that is lifted on the, the builders that are wanting to build, uh, they should be able to go. But we shouldn't be adding any more dream subdivisions right now. If we do, that should not, we should not give those people an idea that they're going to be able to do it, I'm doing it in Decatur right now. People are calling, wanting to build subdivisions, and it won't happen right now. Take your name, take your whatever, we're not, we're not telling you you're going to be able to do it.
When this opens up, what are your plans for, I know that the politics are kind of prioritized based on the timing that they've been submitted and approved. But if, say, a developer gets the approval to go, they're not shovel ready. Are we going to wait six months before somebody else is given that opportunity if they're ready to start digging?
Great question. When I met with the health department myself, a couple of months ago, I questioned, I asked that question, and I've asked him again and again. So I say, okay, are you, how are you going to do this, have you got a list, have you got a, a step program, what are, what are you going to do? And he says, well, when, you've got to remember, these gentlemen I'm talking to, they're hired, they're not elected. They're not appointed by an elected official, the health department, that's what I believe to be true, I may be wrong, I think I'm true. Anyway, so these people are just doing a job. And they're saying, as soon as we're, we release them and the health department says it's good to go, it's good to go. So everybody that's in the queue, which means everybody's in that list, that's on my spreadsheet. For Decatur and for Centerton can go. Nobody else, if they're dreamers. The dreamers just can't come right now.
I think the reason for my question is, I just hope that there's communication and we can, Centerton and Decatur can. Do this in a similar fashion, so that it's fair to the developers that have been waiting.
Absolutely.
All this time, that we're not missing them, or we're not holding up others because some decided that they're not ready now, or have you?
I'm going to have a follow up to that.
Anyway.
Uh, that's, I feel like extremely important and transparency is important here. Even if. We get the green light to go, there's pinch issues in our city. That, well, there's pinch points in our city that will prevent us. That's, I'm asking that question. That's what, that was my concern, to say, yeah, we have a green light, we don't, we really don't fully have a green light, we have. We have a green light with you guys, but not with us.
That's on our list.
That's, that's a good point, but the mayor's got it. Get that on me.
Thank you, man.
So let's have a real quick question, so just to confirm, Decatur's pit, your, any new projects are at halt, you're not approving any new projects going forward, do I understand it correctly?
It means, yeah.
Okay.
We're constantly getting, we're constantly having people come to us. We're constantly having people come to us and say, we want to buy forty acres, we want subdivided, we're so served. And and I'm turning, I'm saying, you can't come, you, you want to, you can buy the land, but that's on you. Where you can come to me because we can't handle that, after everything that's in the queue is done. That makes sense?
Yes, that makes sense, thank you.
They're responsible, to let them know.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, and I would encourage Centerton to do the same thing, we do that. Better tell them about. So I would encourage Centerton to do the same thing, that's what we're trying to do, and why am I so interested in this? Because I get the stuff. I get it in my, in my neighborhood, my town, and we need to, we need to manage this better than we've done. And, um, Anderson and I, early on, agreed to that, we need to be managing this a whole lot better than we've done. So we've seen the error of our way. We've committed that we're going to do different, and we are going to do different. Anything else I didn't talk about?
I wouldn't get too far away. You can probably sit there and bear the fright, I'm sure they'll have more questions for.
Back where I belong.
Okay, I'm sure they have more questions. All right. Ready to go on to the next item? So I think we've already heard the flow numbers. Uh, for us, I think. There was thirty seven, thirty eight percent, and then the rest was Decatur. Bob, I I do have a question, so I know. We have a meter at the plant from Centerton that shows what we send to you.
Yes.
Were you having plans to have Decatur's? Meter from Decatur show what you're getting at the plant too, or?
It's every day, Mayor.
I thought you went out to, I thought you told me you went out to Simmons to get it.
Oh, at Simmons?
Uh, to get there, to get their flow.
Decatur, right.
You know, yeah, you got all Decatur's flow, okay.
So the answer is yes, all right.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because then we help you monitor. All right. Do we have more questions on flow numbers or? So the next thing, I think we pretty well covered NACA too as part of that, I think, uh. I think, uh, you know, we talked about connection, how much to construct, uh. I think, uh, you know, we talked about connection, how much to construct, uh, timelines. I think that was covered. Bees, approximate flow. I think that was all covered, half million gallons. So I think that was good.
Let me respond one more time, please.
Sure.
You have not been asked. The city of Centerton has not been asked for money from Decatur. We have done like we've always done for you, manage our own business, keep the plant up. We borrowed to the tip and we've reached that limit. And so it's, it's a matter that I know James and Malcolm had a conversation about this upgrade we're working on. I thought we could probably handle it without adding, knowing that six oh five is going to come our way. Adding, knowing that we're going to be forced into rate increases and that should help us. So, and also we need to make sure we know exactly what everybody's doing on our side. And we've done some improvements on that with this upgrade right now. So we will have five meters eventually. Coming in. So we can see exactly what everybody's, you can call it up on your app, apps on your phone, whatever. And that's, that's the reason you haven't been asked. If I was asked you tonight, I would say, Bill, I need thirty-eight percent of seventeen million dollars.
If nobody said it, thank you to you and your assistants for taking that. I'll stall.
You're welcome.
We have any more discussion on NACA? I think we, like I said, I think that was. So the next thing that's on here is, is the pinch point. I don't know. I think engineers might brought some plans. Is that pinch points or no?
Mayor, it is. And we, we do have a draft set of plans, uh, which we sat down with. Would you like me to go?
Yeah. And if you want to. Yeah, that'd probably be fine because that, that's been a concern that we've got some conversation on too.
I'm Tim, ESI. So we, uh, we are working on the downtown collection system upgrade. For the water and sewer commission. We met with, um. Malcolm and Red a few weeks ago to review the plans. Uh, there were some changes that we decided to make. So we are going through those revisions right now. And we are hopeful that we can have that ready to sit back and review once again. And hopefully after that, get it submitted to the Arkansas Department. And so it is a, a, a large diameter pipeline all the way from the Allen Road lift station. All the way to where, near where the old Centerton Cafe used to sit. And so it is, uh, uh, starts out a thirty-six inch sewer main. Reduces to a little smaller, a twenty-one inch and then onto eighteen. So it's a project itself. If I don't have the, the numbers. The project itself is, is roughly nine million dollars to construct. And our initial look at it, uh, we were unsure if, if there was going to be a connection to NACA. Or if all flow was going to Decatur. So the first look at it, we added a twenty-four inch diameter. Gravity sewer main. If a portion of flow was going that direction. That cost was around seven million dollars. And so the, the long-term goal, I think of the, of the commission is to. Go to here. So we are currently. Making sure that thirty-six inch line is shown on our drawings. And so that is what will be submitted to the department. Any questions on that? Um, you know, most of this is within, will be within existing easements. Uh, there are some new easements being acquired associated with the relocate or the relocation of utilities. To accommodate the new widening of the road. There's some easement acquisition going on with that, but most of the line work can be. Work within.
On that same subject, I remember when this house first started, it was like four pitch points. Or if I'm, if I'm, memory serves me right.
Well, I understood too, there were four.
Four main ones.
This is the last one to do.
Some of the same. This is increasing some of the same pipes that are already in that works.
Yeah. So, yeah. So a portion of, uh, there were some improvements done too, about a year and a half, two years ago. Those, you may want to talk on that. Some, most of those will remain as they are. Is that correct yet? Because it's, it's a separate lateral that feeds that area. So this, we're not replacing the branding path. So make sure that that's understood.
The question is, is this the only pinch point that we need to fix to open up development on the capacities there?
Um, you want to talk on the Northwest connection and others because it.
We do have some other long-range plans that we feel are necessary for continued growth in Centerton. Part of that does include more infrastructure out on the west side of town, which is not currently very well served by sewer. Uh, it includes a large diameter gravity main that, that. Approximately runs just to the east of two seventy-nine north. Uh, goes up to about the two seventy-nine and Seba Road area. Uh, kind of near where the animal shelter is now, uh, where we have plans for a future. Transfer station that will ultimately become the new workhorse to deliver flow to Decatur. And that will open up pretty large swath in the northwest part of the city that's not currently served.
This is all based on a hundred gallons per day, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, is there was, here can, I just wanted some clarification. So there's a nine-month period that we submitted to ADH. Is that correct?
I think that's right, eight or nine.
And then we had to start the clock over. Can you explain what happened and why we had to start the clock over? Why didn't they accept that? Or why did we get just the nine months and submit it?
Uh, yes, but I mean, part of, part of what we've been, you know, some of the time that has been spent looking at this problem. From our perspective is trying to save money for your customers, for the city. Trying to be judicious with how we spend the money, with how we design projects. We had been attempting to get clearance from the health department to design infrastructure. Based on real-world flows that you're currently seeing in your pipe. Uh, part of what we tried to do was look at how much water you're selling, how much water is being consumed in the city. Um, the state was not really happy with that method. On, on average, people use about fifty-eight to sixty gallons per person per day. Uh, the state says, we want you to use a hundred as the number. Um, we acknowledge and recognize for plan of new infrastructure, but we were trying to analyze the flow that's already in the pipe. They didn't like the methodology with how much water is being sold. Uh, so we, we went to the next step, which is some flow monitoring. Uh, the utility went out and contracted with a subconsultant named Trek. They came in, they installed some flow monitors. Uh, produced a study after about nine months of monitoring, submitted that to the state. Trek was very confident in the results of the study. Uh, but then the state came back and told us, well, you've not collected enough data. Uh, and in response, they issued some new guidelines that now say you have twelve months of data. Um, with other conditions associated, um. You have to have twelve months plus a particular type of storm event has to occur within those twelve months. Or maybe it goes beyond twelve months. So now the commission has contracted with a second company. That study has now already been initiated.
Information wasn't provided to us initially. Only until after he said, by the way.
It was only in response to the submittal of the report from the first nine months of stuff.
The disconnect for me was because I was like, that's three months that we could have added on, prevented. And then I sent the request to Nick Burks and, and, you know, we talked about municipalities having a lower. Well, it seems like P Ridge was the only one that was presented, ninety-one gallons per day.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So what's the goal now? The goal now is to get to what, sixty-three?
All of our designs now moving forward are, are based on a hundred because.
I mean, I just referring to the reduction. These are requests for reduction. Is that still on the table or?
They're kind of separate. They're on separate tracks. I mean, we're, we're using a hundred to go ahead and, and proceed with the design. Get it going. Try to get it under construction as quickly as possible or approve through the health department to where they can let some of these developments go through. At the same time, you know, we're, we're going to have a, a component out there on our chart that's going to say, okay, you have, you know. Sixty percent capacity remaining or thirty percent in this pipeline. Well, if the health department accepts the study from RJN and they come up with a flow of eighty gallons per capita per day. Then that would increase the available capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've initiated that study with RJN to do that twelve-month period. But in the design of that, what we've done is we've taken it to where we can collect that three to four months. And take that data and add it with the nine they already have. And maybe we'd be lucky enough that they'll go ahead and, and approve it.
So when capacity at Decatur is increased, how many developments are impacted by these pinch points where they'll be delayed?
I think that's two different systems. You're talking about two different parameter.
I think what she's asking.
Total flow and we're talking about pinch point.
No, I understand that. I'm asking once Decatur gets up to where they're supposed to be. After the fact, how many developments are impacted and not able to move forward, even if they're in the Q two?
I think that's.
Yeah, I, I think. You know, we have pinch points. We're working to get, come up with plans to correct that. I think that, uh, it's not going to be a bar, the additional, you know. For additional development. I think we'll have, have the work done without.
When did you restart the three months of testing?
About to go.
So we'll know what, where the December thirty-first.
That's, that's not necessarily accurate because we need to hit, um, rain season. So we're going to be more of the spring.
It's going to be June before we'll have. Hopefully.
You're asking us to prophesy what the state's going to do and how long it'll take them to make a decision.
And what the weather's going to do.
Really can't do that. Don't stop before a year.
But.
Do this, get the okay.
Storms we see the first part next year. If there's a, the air twenty or fifty year storm in February, maybe okay.
Have that storm Thursday.
Few things to note about flow monitoring and studying, right? There's great benefits from it. We're going to understand our system better. We're going to have updated GIS that's going to be able to actively monitor our capacities throughout our system. Those are all great benefits. The, the potential downside, which I mean, may or may not be a reality is if we go to this system. Um, the state is probably going to require us to continually monitor our flows in perpetuity. So this is going to be an O and M cost that is added to, to our budget, which is fine. Um, but if we start to see flow rates increase, say the system begins to deteriorate. And, um, more ionized inflow and infiltration into the system occurs, right? And our flow rates start to push up over a hundred, then we're going to be stuck to those numbers. Um, so that, that's just something to note, right? I don't see it as a, a negative on the system, but just so it's very clearly stated. But this isn't just a, we're going to monitor for a year and then abandon ship. This is, we're committing to the system and this is how we're going to operate moving forward.
Wendy, I think your question was dead on. Um, so after Decatur gets approval to the five point three six million. You know, then the health department's going to come back and say, hey, I mean, if, if we have not submitted them plans. Hey, you have a, you have a bottleneck in your system and you've not received this. So it's important that we get the plans to them as quickly as we can. And we're, we're working on that. And I'll assure you, we'll have them there very, very quickly. Uh, the other component is, is they. Uh, have indicated that once they receive a set of plans and they know that it's moving forward to construction. That they can consider that, you know, to where these developments can proceed on. Start, you know, the infrastructure to build a development takes, you know, how long? I mean, a year or twelve months. So, and then, then after that, then they start building the homes. And so it's important that, that we move forward with the collection system upgrades. And if they don't have those plans, you know, when Mayor Bob gets their plant upgraded, it'll be a question that they ask. And so, but we're, we'll have to, we'll have a very sensitive.
Wendy, I think you asked a question a while ago and I repeated, make sure I understood it. I think you asked how many homes would be able to be built as soon as I'm ready to receive.
I just know that in a year and a half or however long it's been, about a year that I've been attending these meetings. The same developers are showing up to the meetings, asking these questions. When, with the timeline, we're sitting on a lot of, of.
Did I ask that question? So you understood it. Is that your question?
Yeah, I, my main thing is just trying to understand like, if there's pinch points, what's the timeline? Cause even if you've got people that are in the line, we talked about, I talked to, uh, planning department as far as like a list. You get some at the top of the list, but they can't move forward because of where their property is. Then how does that get worked out? You know what I'm saying?
Pinch points, that doesn't.
Back to you. I understand that. My, my question was how many are impact going to be impacted by that because of the pinch points?
I can tell you right now, we have in the city of Decatur, uh, nine hundred and nine homes that would like to build. And a hundred and sixty-eight have been approved by ADH. And they're just waiting and they're building. They could build, they could build in Decatur. Uh, Centerton has eight hundred and twenty-four that have been approved by ADH. They could build. That's what some of the building down west is going on right now. Uh, Centerton units approved by DHS in final process, but not planted. There's three hundred and eighty-two of those. Uh, Decatur and not approved by ADH, seven hundred and forty-one. And Centerton not approved by ADH is nine hundred and eighty-one. Centerton, uh, units not approved by ADH in, in construction is five hundred and seventy. So that is, that adds up to about three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six possible units. When I say units, I'm talking about an apartment or a house. People that are living, there's two point eight people in a house. It's a hundred gallons. You're not going to get that changed until the Department of Health gets it changed and gets, gets convinced. And again, those aren't elected people. So we can put pressure on it, on the health department, but it's not going to change much. So they know it's right. And they're going to do that with the study that has been approved by your commission. So my, I guess my whole point is we have a lot of houses to get built in. And my cue is these houses. Lauren and I've been talking about this. Whenever she's giving me her numbers and my numbers and I have a Decatur, that's in the queue. When I get done, December thirty-first or January first or whatever date it is. And then in December, those are going to be released because I'm released. They're not going to control who builds what, when. It's just going to be released and they're going to start building. And then when the houses are done, these builders are going to get done. Then they're going to release the product and it's going to come our way.
Maybe there's some confusion on my part and I'm happy to.
Can I push back, correct some of that?
Yeah, please. Cause I think I've got.
Two different languages here.
Right.
Mayor Tharp is exactly right on what he's talking about. Is it okay to come up here and talk?
Um, so he, he's exactly right. His, the Decatur plant capacity. Is anticipated to be at the five point three six million gallons a day in December. That is the, the fact that the board here has relayed to us and the newspaper has said and everything else. What is not being relayed is this pinch points and the constrictions within the city. And, um, it kind of just, every meeting, it just gets brushed by and, um, we keep. Trying to bring it back to the top of the table and back to the top so we can discuss it. But it's always, well, we're kind of working on this or we're doing something or, and it, it doesn't even show up on. Director's report for you guys' meeting. So you don't really know, hey, is this important or is this not important? Um, if you go all the way back to April of two thousand and twenty-four, which is when we got the health department letter that said, ooh, holy crap. Capacity issues in Centerton. These projects cannot move forward due to capacity constraints. It was of the system in Centerton. There was eleven, there was seven pinch points in the. There was eleven, there was seven pinch points in the system that said, none of these can move forward because they all hit this pinch point. And then the very last paragraph in that letter said, oh, by the way, Decatur is approaching capacity and we're checking that out. That was the point of that April twenty fourth letter was to let everybody that was on that development list, which there was eleven projects that had capacity issues in the system of Centerton, nothing to do with Decatur. Since then, two of those have moved forward. So nothing's been approved by the health department since two thousand twenty four, which is something that gets lost in the meetings and everything else. We just don't ever go back to, hey, when was the last time somebody got something approved? Um, and that's, that's where it hits. And it's, I don't blame you guys because what you get in the minutes um of the different meetings is even in December of twenty four, Malcolm and Robert saying, hey, um, there's no problems with our system. The health department says move forward. Then the ESI made a mistake in April of twenty four and said, the health department has approved all our projects. They they had not, and that's never been corrected. So these pinch points, they came up, which I like these guys. They do a good job. They're doing what's directed to them and everything else. But this thirty six inch main that's gonna go down through there is gonna relieve some pressure right there, and it's gonna relieve a few pinch points, and it's gonna help the entire city because a lot of it rolls through there. But the from what our calculations are, this is the picture of Centerton. And the green is the only thing that's not affected by constrictions in the system right now. I have a project right here and it hits seven of these constrictions that are still there. Um, they were somewhat addressed, which the ESI guy said that some of the areas were addressed, but they were only addressed to fix that small amount of flow that got them to accept what was already there. Mine is a hundred percent still tied up. We've all been laying in twenty twenty. We did all our due diligence. We checked with Centerton Sewer, Centerton Water, electric, gas, everything. Those constraints are still there. So the other thing that goes along with this thirty six inch that we're working on now to get to the health department the amount of time that's gonna take. And how many of these things does it fix? This, they said also in their long range, is taking some more pipes to the west to help alleviate that side of the city and free up some projects. By free up some project, that means there's a whole lot of stuff that's hung up. You literally have to go to every single meeting to be able to pick up all this and to um kind of get a handle on what's going on. Castile said earlier that he didn't understand why somebody told the city council last week that we, they weren't giving dates. It's because he specifically instructed that we are not allowed to ask for dates. We're not allowed to ask for anything that can um affect a timeline. We can't ask for any questions at cost. We can't ask, we can't ask questions at all. Um, I don't think that's right for a board. I think it's been swept under the rug. I think it's been blamed on Decatur. I feel like Mayor Tharp has taken it on the chin. I don't see why he's still working with the city of Centerton, to be honest, because he has been treated poorly. And I appreciate you recognizing that. And then Wendy, uh, you guys have done a great job of keeping him in the fight. So um, I'd be happy to, I mean, I've got a year and a half worth of minutes of the meetings. I have been there. I've been participating. I've participated, all that they would let me participate. I paid for attorneys. I've paid for engineers to reevaluate the system. I had to go out and find system enough to just get the one project. We had to go find a line that was ran incorrectly. And the system was not counting it correctly, so we had to go find the capacity in the system to get one project approved back in twenty four. It's not just me. If it was just me, I've got other projects. We've got four other projects in other counties or cities, and we could go work on those and I'd just sit there and let that be a hayfield for another ten years and move on or I'd sell it or whatever. But I just don't think it's right to the citizens of the city. I don't think it's right to the other developers. Because every time I talk to somebody, they're like, oh, no, it's it. Everything's fine in December. Everything's gonna be fine. There's gonna be no issues. We're good to go. And that is, that's not the case. There's, we need, if I'm wrong, I'll admit I'm wrong, but is, how does ESI feel about that? I mean, are you think that much of the city is affected by the constraints?
I've never seen that map before. Not sure where you.
I mean, it's, it's everything but out over there by Allen Road.
And you're and you're taking that letter that was in April of twenty four?
Yes.
And points that were identified by.
And it was all talking about constraints within the city, yes.
A great number of those were addressed because there was data collection errors and some other things. But I think, I I firmly believe that we addressed all those. And they've been addressed.
Then why does the health department still think all those pinch points are there?
I don't know if all have been, but the ones on that lateral that go up by the uh water and fill of the office, I think those have been upsized. The other portion, you know, from Allen Road, kind of going behind McDonald's, those have not.
Okay.
So our existing, our existing system right now, as it sits, since you guys say you've corrected these, when they turn on the capacity in December, are they going to allow our projects to move forward?
It it's been our experience that's once they have plans submitted to their office and approved, that other projects that are on hold will be released and can move forward. Now, it may be contingent, approval contingent upon the upgrades to the collection system being completed before certificates of occupancy can be issued. But your project, the infrastructure work for your development and even building of homes could commence. That's been our experience.
Your experience, and Malcolm, you can weigh in on this if you don't mind, Tower Park by the the water towers. There's no reason that the health department should not release that in December. As as long as Mayor Tharp gets his.
You're asking us to prophesy what the state's gonna do.
We am. I had to prophesy five years ago when.
I'm sorry you had to prophesy five years ago. We're not in a position to do that and we're not gonna prophesy what the state's gonna do.
You can use your best educated guess as a commission who deals with the health department daily.
We're gonna do everything in our power to make sure there's no holdups. So now, granted, that maybe some information needs to come in RJN group on the hydraulic modeling they're doing right now in our sewer system. We're gonna have, try everything in our power, but there's no limitations coming December, whether it be whether we start on construction or at a minimum, the health department have approved plans for the pinch points.
Well, they, the health department required proof of financing too, that that project is going to be shovel ready and be ready to start.
Wouldn't have ESI go through on the plans if we weren't serious about undertaking the construction.
Oh, I know, I know that, but it's the health, because your rule, the health department says they make the rules. And so if you have your plans for that upgrade into the health department and they say, well, we need to know how you're gonna finance it. You guys have that figured out, because that's ten million bucks.
Yeah, there. You just all right now is performing a rate study on all our capital improvements. We expect that along with our budget for next year, which we're gonna start working on within the next month. Yes, we're gonna be able to come up with the financing. Now, it may have to. It doesn't get to the rates, but we can come up with the financing.
We confirmed that all of those constraints have been.
Pinch points? Yeah, I was gonna ask.
The one that they're currently working on?
Well, I would almost like to see.
The projects leased is not going to, because that was constrained with nine projects. There's now there's thirty three projects that the health department knows about. So I want to make sure. I mean, I'm concerned about mine, but I'm concerned about everybody's. I want to make sure they don't say, it all sounds like we're gonna flip the switch on in December. Decatur's gonna save the day and then we're.
Everybody drives a bulldozer up and starts.
Yeah, start your engines. And we just all know that that's, doesn't sound very realistic to me because when we have to do something with the health department, it takes months and months of back and forth. And it may be, they just want you to move this one fire hydrant. They just want you to change this. I know Malcolm does this every day.
I mean, the known pinch points, do everything we can to have those rectified. It's just if if you just comes up with something else, we cannot be able to foresee that. The only way we can do that is when RJN group done performing their hydraulic analysis of our sanitary sewer system, can we better accurately find the pinch points, even ones they're not seeing?
So that could be a year from now, though.
I don't think the hydraulic model will be a year. Now sewer monitoring is possible for the flows, but I don't think the hydraulic modeling is gonna take a year.
Well, I appreciate you guys discussing this with me. Do try at uh the commission meetings, but we're not allowed to do this. And so it gets real confusing and gets really tough to get anything addressed when you can't um ask a question or and I think we've all learned the right to ask a question. I think you're gonna if something's not going just right, I think you deserve to have to answer some questions and 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 maybe be a little more uh amiable to the public wanting to know what is going on and the people that are investing in the community and trying to keep this thing moving. So I appreciate that. Might think of something else a little later, but this flow thing has been the the big deal, and I did not want it to get washed over that. That is what started this whole mess back in two thousand twenty four. And uh there's still nine poor guys and gals hung up on that list from April of two thousand twenty four that have not been able to proceed with their projects. And I'm not even one of those, so. Want to try to help them as much as possible too.
Thank you for help.
Yeah.
Yes, I kind of a quick question. Is there a list of these pinch points, what they are, or status is, what the plan is to get them fixed?
To your knowledge, they've been.
Yeah.
Pinch points that we've been made aware of were done by the track. We we addressed quite a few of them that came down along the McKissick Creek Interceptor and went through the portion of town around by the old Bank of Grabit area. Uh, we have a new project that we're working on. Again, Tim talked about that before that went, basically goes from where the old Centerton Cafe used to be all the way down to the Allen Road lift station. And as far as we're aware of, those are the concerns that the health department has. The portion that came from the north, that project's been addressed and completed. There were, I believe, fourteen developments that were on hold until that project was completed. Once those plans were approved, we were told by the health department that every one of those projects would be released. Once the plans were approved by the health department, that project is now already completed.
Will they be released when I'm?
No, no, no. This is, this is a previous.
So Dan, this is Dan Cole, my engineer that works with me with Sand Creek. Um, he's been very intimate with that project, and he was also very instrumental in helping get the flow monitoring and all of that stuff. Uh, we had to get the health department to agree to a set of rules for flow monitoring because there wasn't one previously in place. So we had to have our hester, we had to have legislators go to the health department and um solicit that on our behalf. And that's how we were able to, with Malcolm's help, get the health department to start acknowledging the value of flow data. So uh, we have been working diligently behind the scenes. I don't just show up at meetings and be a pain. I have helped Malcolm and and the board with the behind the scenes and Dan, they've been very instrumental.
And I, I will say, yes, I don't expect them to know all intermediate choke points. And I think one action that I would suggest for the board, private sector as well, is for the projects that you know are not approved to come forth with what, because every one of us, the health department's making us do studies all the way down to the Eleanor Lift. I can sit down at the table and say, hey, I know for Tower Park subdivision, all of these points are choke points, known. All the engineers should, I would like, I would love to be a part of that. Come together and say, here's all the known choke points. Get everyone together. So here it is, so we can present to the board and to the engineers who are serving them to say, hey, here's all the cataloged ones, because I understand that the thirty six line would help the majority of them. But it's about location, location, location. It's not going to necessarily fix all of them. You're not gonna know that until someone gathers all the private developments, identifies every line for what it is. And I would, I offer that as my cooperation to do that. And for you to encourage the board to sit down and get everyone, because we know, we know the engineers, we know the developments, and they're highly motivated to get that identified and then bring forth, so.
Dan is correct. Um, what I want to say, though, is the original study that Trex did, they did it in in the basically two basins, and they did it just along the immediate larger diameter lines in those basins. They did not go up into the eight inch lines that that might feed certain.
Twelve, even some twelves.
And so, no, the the study itself was was limited in nature uh to some of the larger diameter lines that Centerton has, where all of the flow comes to those lots. And so I think the developments, wherever they may be, you know, they may flow through a series of eight inch to ten inch to twelve inch, all the way down to the fifteen inch line that was studied or the twelve inch line that was studied. So so there may be gaps.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta bridge the gap because that will end up happening. We'll all walk away. Like, we've gotten fixed, to Skip's point. We'll still miss that last ten yards, close the gap.
So they are working on the major from Allen Road along one oh two to uh basically the old Center to Cafe. And so that is, that is the primary feed line that will be through Allen Road. So uh, Dan may know of other items that flow into that line.
Is there some opportunity, maybe you two can get together and maybe maybe review that. He's offering to help and
Yeah.
and then maybe bring it back to the commission and, you know, this case, there's something's being missed. We don't want.
We're both on the private side. We're not gonna be able to have the authority to do that. Well, I'm asking you as a city council and or the board to gather your known gaps. If they help me document and list everything where we can get full clarity, because that's what everyone's striving for is clarity. I'm telling you, I'm willing to do it. I've just gotta have all as the governing body to help create that format, to bring us all together, to get it. Uh, the lines spelled out to what we need fixed.
And just for clarification, these pinch points as he's talking about, they obviously aren't for the hundred gallons per day, right? So you're hoping that these pinch points are gonna go away if they give you a reduced calculation, which is probably not the best.
Yeah, as far as existing stuff, it'll help relieve some of those pinch points, not using a hundred gallons per person per day for everything. And using the actual data from the flow monitor we're gonna get.
The system should have been built to the hundred standard, because that's what it was, right? You don't, you don't underbuild and hope you get grace. You should.
Best in infrastructure, you're never gonna use either, when we're showing, based on what Shrek had, even some of the wet lines that were closer to forty two, forty five gallons per person.
Mr. Thompson, if I can speak to that, I think the infrastructure in question, I think there's some misunderstanding. The infrastructure in question was designed and built for hundred gallons per day. It's just that Centerton smaller, was a lot smaller at the time. And so as the city has grown, you know, more flow is coming into the line and now you know, it's reached the point where when you use a hundred gallons per capita per day, it appears that the pipes are full. Now, the the whole point with this flow monitoring study is when you go out in the field and you actually look in the pipes, the pipes are not full. And what what the point of the flow monitoring study is, is to really force the health department to acknowledge that the pipes are not really as full as they think they are. And and that's, you know, it directly impacts things like your customers' rates when we have to build, you know, much larger infrastructure to address a problem that may not actually be there. That that's part of what we've been spending time uh trying to address. Rather than just throwing unlimited money at at the problem.
I'm Tim Sorio, I own Sand Creek Engineering. Um, at some point, I set it on a mission for my professional career to take on the Arkansas Department of Health, their insanity.
Okay.
And I appreciate what Jeff's saying. And I appreciate what Jeff's saying. I really do. Um because he's spot on and what Malcolm said, he's spot on. Why would we spend good money, taxpayer money? To oversize infrastructure that we is just going to be wasted. At the valid point. The issue is. What is the likelihood of the health department backing off of their hundred gallons per person per day? That's slim to none. Now, unless you all want to engage in every mayor, in every JP. And force their hands at the right time of the year before their budget is voted on, you're not going to get it done. They play the game, they wait it out, they're ultra conservative, I went to school with them. They haven't worked in the real world, they're way smarter than me on this stuff, but they're not necessarily practical. They shouldn't be if they're the gardeners of the gate for public health. The issue Rogers has issues because they're not letting them surcharge in their trunk main lines, when those trunk main lines are twenty, twenty-five feet deep. And don't have service connections to worry about. If they're not letting, and this is storm events, when they have I N I. So when Jeff's talking about flow in pipes, that's calculated flow versus real flow. But the health department also has to take into consideration the I N I. And they don't want any surcharge in a pipe in a five-year event storm, which is a very low storm. We get way bigger storms than that. They're, they are doing their responsible work. And I, we either got, we got to pick our battles. Because either you change the whole system of what you're fighting against, or you go ahead and put in place what it's going to take. To work within their system and get it done in a timely fashion, but we're beating our heads against the wall. And I instigated some of these meetings. I made the call to Bart Hester so we could get it started. And and I'm frustrated to death, but the issue is there should have been moratoriums issued. Two, three years ago, because we should have known where we were going to be. And to not be responsible and have it all studied, why don't we have a map? Why is my project manager mapping out city of Centerton's lines or Bentonville's lines? And finding out where they got capacity problems? That's ridiculous. He's paying us. It didn't right. And I'm tired of it. And I'm so close to retiring, but I don't think I get to. I don't think I'm going to win my battle at the health department, but I'm telling you, you got to pick your battles. You need to know what your problems are. And you need to have a reasonable way so that developers like this know where am I in the queue? And I'm ready to move dirt. And if Decatur gets their plant up and running, and they've got twelve more developments that's not on your list right now, but are. Ready to go when you get done, and these lines aren't. And you release capacity, and he's still waiting again. If y'all don't have it in place, who gives the tap? You're failing them because you didn't tell them when I came to the different departments and said. What do I need to know before this developer buys this land? And I didn't get the answer, we got some serious sewer issues. That's not okay. If I can't get a good answer from traffic. From water capacity, sewer capacity, that that's planning, right? And the rain can't do it without good data from other places. And I'm sorry, but I'm just, I'm just too old and tired of battling the same battles over and over. And it all ends up flowing downstream to get pushed on the developers. And quite frankly, guys, I haven't met anybody more older. You need to take care of it.
He's only thirty. This is business. I'm pretty old. Um I just had one last question, and it's one that's been bugging me since uh the last meeting they had. They had a special sewer utility meeting on the thirtieth. And it was about um letting the developers create their own um. Treatment facilities onsite on their properties and everything, and saying that they were, had decided they were in favor of that. Trying to find a way forward. I'm just wondering why they decided that if it was all going to be fixed in December. If everything was going to be miraculously solved and December was good to go. Why would we start something that's going to take a year to get through the health department and all that? I knew you'd have a good answer.
It went away. The state told us we couldn't do it. They passed a law.
Right. After you guys decided you were going to embrace it, yes.
Well, we didn't know about the law at that time.
You're missing my question. I'm sorry. So we had developers come to you guys and ask for the last couple, three months. One in particular has been leading that charge. He's been to planning, he's been all over, spending his money, bringing in consultants, all that kind of stuff. You got, and we listened to the city engineer, we did all of that kind of stuff we're supposed to do. You guys decided, yes, you were going to accept those, uh and that you were going to embrace that and you were going to allow that to happen. That, that would take us a year to get that through the health department. Why if we were going to be, everything was going to be fine in December. Why, why was that even considered? Why not just say, when I'm thinking about that, because everything's going to be fine in December? And we're all off to the races. That's what's been bugging me ever since that special meeting.
We tried to make that. We tried to make the very point that you just said. And it wasn't satisfactory to the builders, so we decided to allow him to do what he thought he needed to do. Just in case it wasn't.
Because I know for a fact his project has constraints as well, and that's why I'm asking for him, because he's not able to be here tonight.
We tried to make the point that it should be relieved in December.
Go ahead and do the treatment facility.
We voted on allowing that if that's what the builder wanted to do. And then the state stepped in and says, no, we're not going to allow that anymore.
And and for clarity, Malcolm, do you have any thoughts on that, just so?
For clarity, we didn't approve decentralized wastewater treatment plants. We authorized our attorney. To draft the language that we could review, because if you were at that meeting.
It wasn't because it was last minute.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm not accusing you of not being there, but I spoke out very um. In opposition of decentralized wastewater treatment plants because of long-term maintenance and operations, and how does that get handled? And so as a commission, our discussion has primarily been, we really don't want them. And so the directive was to the attorney to say, can you draft a language that we can review at the next meeting that may. Appease this solution, because again, this would be something going in place, not just for this year, it'd be in place for perpetuity perpetuity. That could be done throughout the entirety of our water sewer service area.
Okay, this wouldn't make sense to me. What's your thoughts on that, Malcolm? Just so, let me.
I didn't like the idea. I wasn't for.
It seemed like, I I read the minutes of that meeting, it seemed like you guys were drafted your attorney to sort of preparing documents and that kind of thing. And then the very next meeting, they said, we're, they were going to do it, but then the state came in and said they couldn't do it. But that was just confusing, because if everything's going to be ready in December, why would we even, why would you guys not just say? There's no need. Everything's great in December.
Good, because I think one of your lines was that we have to pick our battles, and so we're picking about.
We were picking a bad, we were trying to.
We all usually don't have a problem telling us to hush up, so I figured that would benefit. Okay, we we tried.
Uh I have a question on, what's the, I'm at a developer, the cooperation requirement of a developer? If they find that the the flow of a pipe is too small, what's their, or what's the current policy guideline?
It's determined that there's downstream requirement uh X. If there's downstream requirements for changes to the system. The developer and the commission will have to negotiate. A cost split.
Thank you.
I think we we covered that okay. The next thing, I I think I actually heard a couple times is a priority, prioritize list of projects. And uh I mean, we we compared about eight lists. And then we looked at our. Land report, and there's identified projects, which is really no priority. Uh so the questions here were, can the list be made, can this priority list be made available to the city and developers? So those projects have rank and that will be ready to go when capacity is available.
Yes, it probably needs some updates at this point, but planning and our department have developed a priority list. So we need to review it and make sure any updates have been added to, but I don't think we'd have a problem sending it out.
Can we make available access to the to the public and or council there?
No problem.
Yeah, then the next one is, can estimates be provided on how long it may before a project could expect to be approved to start construction? I think you already covered that like with December, I mean, as far as. I think I probably will cover that one. But then here's another, another good one. If a project is in line for capacity. And ready to go, but the collection system flow monitor not been resolved. That project capacity be reserved for that project until the restricted pipe areas are upsized or accepted by ADH?
I might relate your question.
Yeah, I think. We're going to have to look at that. Thing about pinch points to be able to resolve that question.
Some of the pinch points we may not know about.
I wonder if, was it like Dan, is it, can he, can he submit that to you? I mean, he can't submit to them, but he submitted to you and you, somebody.
On that, but I mean. He's.
They believe it's.
Engineer who's to say that. I mean, it's going to come on the, based on their analysis, a lot of times, we may or may not know that. Especially on the smaller stuff, so I don't have a problem with that at all.
Go ahead, sorry. I was just saying, how how do we have? The private sector or contractor or pinch points and we don't? How, I that, this doesn't seem like, I don't understand that. Uh I'm hiring RJN to do the, not only the the data collection on the sewer flow. But also prepare a hydraulic model of the sewer system, what they're going to be able to see. And what they're going to be able to do, hopefully use RJN if the developer comes in and says, hey. Uh are there any concerns in this area? RJN can use that model. Then determine if there is, and so that's, that that's the investment that they're making right now. Okay. So we'll catch up to be able to identify our own problems and not be told. Takes a little bit of time, but yes, that's the intent. Okay.
Oh, so if correct.
It might be like the eights and the twelves and stuff like that.
Model, the model starts as the main trunk lines, but over time, we can build that out to be the entire system.
But your contract right now would would not solve it.
Right now, we got a, right now, we are creating a GIS model that effectively doesn't fully exist, and so we're starting from scratch. Through playing catch up, so. Is it like an eighty-twenty rule here, or is it going to capture eighty percent of the problems and maybe not C twenty? Is there any estimates behind that? Live model of our entire system. Okay. It'll, we'll see the theoretical design data that that. Okay, yeah. And then we can backcheck that with the flow monitoring to say, hey, how's the theoretical design data turn up with the real world flows that it's experiencing? Okay.
Mr. Miles, I I agree with your point. We can knock out a majority of them quickly. I I can go back to my office and tonight, if I wanted to send. Malcolm, it's these pipe runs. Every engineer who's waiting to get approved to ADH has already done the exact same thing, so. We can quickly, without having to have the full GIS view and spend that money to get there. We can get you majority of the way, just what's already in the hands of the private sector. You need someone to. Collect, consolidate, and then we can get packages and work the majority of the problems.
Awesome. Then going forward, we have a solution for the big problems that we're going to experience in the short term.
But I I think as Commissioner Anderson mentioned, that the cost of those downstream improvements is not solely borne by. The Water Sewer Commission, just so that it's clear, but this is a cost share opportunity. Between the commission and the potential developer.
That was, since you brought that back up, I actually have a follow-up question on that. Is there like a historical or customarily negotiated point the commission typically lands? In asking for an amount or a percentage from the developer, so it's it's renegotiated every time?
Something that we should probably consider adopting into our formal, or in the setting code, how we establish that.
I mean, it's. Eliminatory plats approved, they need to tell the developer they're going to owe two million dollars to fix their system. Preferably. And then you would purchase the land. Then you would know, hey, that's not going to work mathematically. They come to me after mine's been sitting at the health department after almost a year. They tell me I'm going to owe two million dollars. That is not going to go well with anybody who's a developer and they don't deserve that. There's absolutely no reason why that should be a cost share deal. Malcolm said earlier, he was going to get those pinch points fixed. They would not be an issue and they would be ready to go by December, so. That's what we're looking for, and I'm going with Malcolm's word, what he said while we.
Being, being a former commissioner, I I do want to hear what you have to say, but let me, being a former commissioner. And listening to Jeff on ESI, you know, the pinch points are going to come there as new developments come in. Uh it's not, I don't necessarily believe it's the city's fault, the commission's fault, or anyone that the pipes are small. I think as we develop and we build and we get bigger, those costs are going to just happen. Because, I mean, it's just going to happen. Nobody's going to know what those costs are until the developer comes in and says, I'm going to need thirty houses or I'm going to need four hundred houses. So those costs are going to happen. Malcolm, I would like to hear your response that you had.
So we we'll fix this, as we know we have problems with. So at this point, that's what I'm saying too, the hydraulic model will help with that, but we don't know, be able to get us the data we need. To analyze our entire system, so.
It could hurt anything if he just provides you that list, you give it to this person during your study or so it's nothing's overlooked.
Yeah, yes.
You know, I I'm sorry, but I'm I'm struggling with this because nobody's talked about his interest carry. Nobody's talked about what he's paid Sand Creek to do excess work that, quite frankly, I believe should have been done by this board. They should have known their capacities, they should have had a ma- model. You've been growing at a rate that. That says you should have had it. I can go to Springdale, I can get the model. I can go to Bentonville, I can get a model there, way behind, they're screwed up.
So do you disagree that, hold on, you disagree that the pipes that are built thirty years ago? And now we're getting, I'm just estimating on when the pipes were built, it could have been five years ago, hold on, that. The developer should not own some of that cost in.
Not at all.
Those homes.
Not at all, I agree.
So you would say, so would you say that the commission should be paying ahead of time before the developer ever comes in?
So what what the MO has been, um and it has changed in the course of my career. If I had a developer that was building out on the outskirts of town and everything needed to be eight inch. The cities used to say, we know we're going to have future growth. We will take care of the upsize to get to a twelve inch along this road. You pick up the cost for the eight inch. And there was that ongoing cost share and there was a planning projection of what needed to happen, that's new development in green fields. I haven't seen that in a long time, very rarely. Hold on, let me finish, okay? The other issue is, like you were saying, you have aged infrastructure. That is either out of capacity or in bad condition. Okay, well, it's not the developer's responsibility to keep it in condition, and there ought to be budget money for that. But not knowing where you can allow growth. I mean, if you think about what Bentonville's doing right now downtown and creating more density, if Centerton ever does that. And you, you don't even know if you can, because the infrastructure and you can't. You can't educate a potential developer that's wanting to put a seven-story hotel downtown and say, oh, gosh, you're going to have to. You're going to have to go two miles down the road in improving sewer infrastructure and bring water in to make this happen. The issue is you don't know your system. I'm all about the developer paying his fair share. But the developers can't even get a straight answer to know what to budget for. And if they can't get that straight answer before they buy the dirt, y'all, it's wrong.
Now, the new system's going to help us identify this, correct? So strategically, we can start being. Much better about our future planning and identifying where these are.
What what we're dealing with is the sins of the past, living with that right now.
But you're putting this stuff sin, exactly what we're talking about doing in the future.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just so it's known, though, I mean. Just so it's known though, I mean, just in my time on the commission, there were times where we. Where we did exactly that, the developer knew ahead of time. I remember multiple occasions where that was the case. So I, I can't speak to any one individual and stuff, but to say it's a, a. Something that's happened across the board is, is too absolute.
There's, and, and example is Wolverine, we just finished that one and final plotted it. I knew ahead of time I had to pay three hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the lift station in Silver Maple. I accepted that, it worked into my budget, everything was fine. In addition to that, I went down a block and did some upgrades of the sewer system there. I knew that ahead of time. Said that worked great, but to come to us four years later and say, oh, by the way. You've got this several million dollars worth to pay, that's not fair. We've been asking for over a year for a heat map of the city saying, stay clear, these areas do not buy any land in this area because. We don't have the, the infrastructures, the eight inch lines, we, it's too old, we can't hook on. But nobody has ever provided that. I'm the only one I know that has ever provided a map to show where these. Where we have issues. And I think that's just a basic minimum we ought to be able to expect of the board. To provide to the developers who are trying to do something, lay that thing out there. And then you'll know, you gotta get a good deal on that land or because you're gonna really pay the price.
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that the commission can necessarily, you know, redline properties and stuff. I think you. Would have. What size piping is where, correct? So that's accessible, correct?
And then where can we marry up the information over to the planning department? Ever permits and builders are coming in to start applying, where can we apply? The knowledge we're gonna gain from our systems and pipes of where that heat map is that's being talked about. Can we marry, is that gonna be possible to marry up within the process?
We'll have the information from RJN group. Yeah, let's know, I, if there is.
The other thing that leaves us kind of hanging out in the wind is. We do this, we get approval from sewer, all this kind of stuff. We think everything's great. We can't even send ours to the health department. Then to start working on until we have the preliminary plat. We're hundreds of thousands of dollars into the design, into the land, all of that. Then after we have the city council meeting, we get that approved. Then we send it to the health department and they start in on us as saying, oh no, there's a pinch point here, there's a pinch point there, we're not gonna do this. And it's a six month ordeal with them. So we can't, it's not, we do it best we can ahead of time, but we're. Blowing in the wind until we get an official project, because they're not gonna waste their time. On projects that haven't gone through the cities and there was, that's showing respect to you all, I guess. They're saying, yes. We're gonna make sure Centerton wants this before we ever invest any time in this. That's when their engineers start. And repeat the entire system and that's why we're getting them all kicked back.
I, I just want, might have more thing, and there's just really directness to Tim. So. When he talked about, I talked about the pinch points, he said he already had him offer him too, so. We're not asking any extra expense if he can still just pass it on.
I'm not saying we won't provide it and I'm not saying that. He works for me.
Yeah, I got that.
And he, he did the work. For me, for Skip. And I'm, I'd be willing to bet you that the majority of the consulting engineers out there would love to provide the data. That we've put together so we can try to get our stinking stuff approved at the health department and get on down the road. It's there, most everybody has it. Somebody needs to correlate it together and make sure. That it takes, gets taken ownership of by the city or the city's engineer. And push back to the department saying, here's our problem. But yeah, I'll, and can send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, since you already have it, that way at least we can pass it on to the people doing the work and we don't miss it. So. I just want to try to help, help that concern.
I don't think Skip is gonna hold me up from sending that net. I think he's highly.
Already done, he said, he, he provided us a map already, so. So, so back, back to this list that we talked about, what, what's the timeline on seeing that? Is there a timeline when we can?
What I, uh, what I need sort of, well, we had done is that we took the projects that had been approved by ADH. And, and the planning commission that addressed all the comments by ADH. But what we don't have are really capacity numbers. Do we need those? And then also we don't have commercial, because we don't have commercial in there also. And those would go, or does that affect anything?
Commercial, as much as residential, but commercial.
I mean, we have a limited number that have, are actually. Been, uh, have addressed all the comment. Then we have, you know, all the other, a lot of projects, you know, in that preliminary. And just, but I think maybe. Three or four that are. Preliminary approval with, uh, weighing on comments, so.
Yeah, I think we're just looking for some kind of timeline when we can expect that.
They'll have to be in groupings. And some, they'll be on the list, but they won't go, you know, they won't move up until they. Get everything addressed.
We can see where they stand and that's, you know, I think that's what they're asking for, so, okay. And then I'm, I'm still unclear. We'll make sure I understood. So if we have a project that's in line, I, I read this, I was gonna make sure I'm clear. Then like, if the project, not he, but if the project's in line. Uh, for the capacity, but this collection flow monitor done and has not been resolved. Does that fall off the list? Does it stay on the list? I think that's. Or pinch point is identified, we don't want it to fall, I mean. We don't want to lose the place. If they waited a year already aligned and all of a sudden we identify something.
To know if they have pinch point problems that need to be addressed.
Yeah, some. The stuff with no pinch point problems, we hopefully will have that. Rectified when Decatur gets their increase. So hopefully that won't be an issue. Uh, we gotta keep the priority list. Now, we have it formed now based on when the projects came in, when they got approvals and then when they got. Health department approval up to the last one or two comments, so.
And whoever's come to the council, can they update us that, or, or put in your director's report, why that, that, that way that we have. You know, so it's being addressed.
Hey Malcolm, what are, what are your known, in your mind, what are the known pinch points right now?
Well, right now, the main trump line's going into Allen, uh, the manhole near McDonald's, kind of that route. So it goes down.
Or any other pinch points in the city that's gonna cause a problem for the developments?
I have to analyze it further to see, because there's been a lot of stuff on the books. Um, and then hopefully you get RJN groups help a little bit with it, because they'd be able to identify. I would hope rather early on what they see is issues, major issues, so.
So when you guys, when you guys look at the city as a whole, the zoning map, you know, the city master plan. Do you project out that, you know, hey, this hundred acres here could be multifamily next year? Do you? If we're following the master plan of the city, there's gotta be some forethought to what we're gonna allow and how we're gonna accommodate it.
You just hit on a sore point for me.
Okay, well, let me have it, because I just want to understand.
Master plan can identify where they want multifamily, where they want single family, what, whatever. But. The. We can't actually plan. For that, because you don't know when it's gonna happen. Right, it's out there. We can look at it and say, yeah, okay, that, we know that's gonna happen. Well, what happens if some guy comes along and he buys eight acres over here? That's zoned for single family and he, and the city council allows it to be zoned for multifamily, ten units. See, and we went from. Ten, you know, we went basically from. Four times eight is thirty two, we go, and, and all of a sudden we're at ten, we're at eighty.
So we would have to upgrade rather than start from scratch.
But yeah, so I mean, you know, you're, you're.
And I can give, you know, there was a, uh, probably the most recent example that I remember is where in our, our comprehensive plan. We had said we're gonna build industrial. And we turned around and, and allowed that to be rezoned to, to. Residential, you know, so to, to Bob's point, you can't plan for that if, because the developments are gonna come, how the developments are gonna come. If, if, how long do you hold off for resi- for industrial? If we really.
Well, I think that's part of the problem is we don't plan.
Down on the south end of the city, which we were looking at infill in our city, which you don't typically just run. A line for sewer. On the outskirts of town.
Right.
And so that, and that really caused a lot of issues with. Their developing in the city because it's all over.
I will tell you, yeah. Seven years ago, we adopted a sewer master plan. And we identified all the main truck lines. Okay, all the major collectors. So the developers would know where they, where that was going to be, where those lines were. We can't say when they're gonna be here. We may, we haven't built them yet. Because we don't know when it's gonna be, but we know where we want them.
The question, I just didn't understand how they.
The other thing I want to add in this category is. You know, we got a big development coming, well, they, they don't use a lot of water. Uh, however, uh, when a new Walmart store comes, you a lot of, a lot of stuff all around. I wanted to make sure with this new capacity we're gonna get, we save some capacity for future commercial projects. I don't know. A lot of it, I don't know, because I, I think most of them.
Commercial projects contribute less.
I want to make sure we reserve some, you know, because we are gonna see an influx. Which, you know, the city certainly needs, but we want to make sure everybody gets taken care of too, but we want to just kind of identify. I think the, the kind of commercial that would come associated with the super center. Would not be a significant, you know, almost would be negligible. Well, I agree with you, mostly just bathrooms or, or wash stations or something like, but I mean, that's, I just wanted to just put that out there.
Everybody knows Walmart only has two stalls and a bathroom. A restaurant that only has a hundred people in there required three, Walmart can get by with two.
Don, you wait for Costco come, so it's gonna mess it all up, okay?
I haven't been in Costco, so I can identify with that.
All right, so the next thing, I think Lorraine even talked about this, is swapping the sewer taps between projects. Somebody can talk about.
I can talk about, it's pretty much projects that. Have approval by ADH, they're either under construction or have been final plotted. They are acting to trade those approved lots. The developments that have not been approved by the health department, so they can build lots, but the. Engineers for these projects are having, have to bear this weight. We're allowing them to, granted, it's the same number of units. Both parties, or they could be the same party, agree to it and the health department make sure they approve everything. So pretty much like, there's one, like Crystal Co has so many lots that have not been. Built upon, or this other subdivision hasn't got approval yet. Crystal Co said, hey, we'll sell them these lots. So they can move forward and we'll sell these until Decatur gets capacity and then we can be approved to go over. It's the engineers and the developers that have kind of led this cause, it hasn't been us. Uh, we've had multiple, multiple meetings with them. I think we're to a point where we can allow them to move forward, but we have to have a binding agreement. Um, it was stating previously they cannot build on those lots if they trade with the unapproved projects until we allow them to. Which is after Decatur gets their capacity.
So are they profitizing on their sewer taps, selling them to somebody else?
Kind of.
Kind of a shady deal going on.
All right, so the, so the next one we have on here, concerned about water loss. Uh, I, I will address the water loss. I wanted to say something, yeah, then you can talk, uh, or, or me. Uh, we did check with the fire department, because I think they were concerned how much they were using. They estimated they were using thirty to forty thousand gallons. They have a big fire.
Maybe what, thirty thousand gallons. An average water meter in Centerton runs at fifteen hundred gallons a minute. Twenty minutes.
No, I, I don't believe the thirty thousand, because I can see them. They go out there and hook onto that hydrant and they start hosing down the driveway. And they're out there more than twenty, you know. So I guess my ques- my question would be on that. Is I know we have hydrant meters over the place. Put a hydrant meter on it, because they train right there.
Right.
That one hydrant. Then we at least you get, I mean, we're not gonna charge us for it, but you know, how many gallons there.
It's not just.
It's not really not, it's, it's unaccounted loss, okay, or unaccounted use, okay. All right, uh, this year we added a dedicated crew to attack water loss. Major water loss that we've identified is in service lines, that is the line that runs from the meter, from the main. To the homeowner's meter. Okay, we added a dedicated crew, well, last year. Yeah, twenty four, we brought that crew. That's a half a billion dollar expense. This year, uh, we finally got our contractor started, got a half a million dollars budgeted this year for that. To pay that contractor. We're, we're getting ready to look at the budget for next year. Uh, we'll have a discussion as to whether we're gonna, we probably going to expand the use of the contractor. And we very well may add an additional crew. Uh, there's some, yeah, a half a million dollars worth of expense associated with adding a crew. Uh, not just for the payment, for the equipment. Uh, okay, so.
But this, this is not a problem that we worked on only for the last couple of years either. When I first came on the, the commission, one of the things I focused on was water loss. I'm, I'm a bit of a numbers guy, so I created a spreadsheet, you know, over a period of time, a year or something like that. And I said, we've lost this much water and this kind of stuff and said, this is how much money we're losing converted dollars and stuff. Okay, I think we need to look at where this water is going. Water loss isn't just a simple, here's how much water you bought, here's how much water you sold. And the difference is water loss, that's not what water loss is. According to the, according to, uh. According to state regulations, water loss is unaccounted for. We can account from what caused the loss. Then we don't have to include it in there. Fire department is a good example. We know what they're using, we can subtract that out because we don't. When a new subdivision comes in and, and it opens up the, the water lines, then we flush out the entire system. Three times. We, we can account for that, then we, then we can deduct for that, because we don't charge the contractor for that water. He donates the infrastructure that he, that he created that or that he installed in that housing development to us when they, when they finished with. Okay, so we don't charge him for the water that they use. The water used in the building process, I don't know, you know, what. We don't, we don't charge them for that.
They take it out of the hydrant, they take, they, they got a hydrant meter.
Okay, right. But, but anyway, if we know where the water loss is and it's, and it's something like that, I know back where I'm from. Uh, the city of, of Whitehall donated water to the Little League organizations so they could sprinkle their fields. You know, that, that's not calculated in as water loss because we donated that water and we know where it went. Like I said a while ago, a thirty thousand gallons a month that the fire department says they're using. Is equivalent to running one fire hydrant for twenty minutes in a month. I think they use a little more than that.
Are they running the fire hydrant just wide open, just flowing the fire hydrant? Are they using their hoses?
Either open or closed.
Using their hoses, they're probably using a, Oz only uses one hundred gallons per minute, so twenty minutes is two thousand gallons if it's wide open. At a hundred PSI, which they're probably just running it off hydrant pressure, so they're probably about half of that.
Seen both, just depends on activity there.
Can't imagine they're just opening a hydrant.
And like, I think they hook it to the truck.
Yeah.
Or you fill the truck back up.
Fill, fill the truck up, you know, flushing the fire hydrants out, they're required to do that before, uh, you know. Fire hydrant test.
Yeah, sure.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, all of that needs to be, and we've been asking for it, ask the chief. Yeah, I mean, all of that needs to be, and we've been asking for it, ask the chief, you need to tell us what you're doing with, you know.
You should thank them for that, because technically you guys should be testing those hydrants and doing all that.
Chief told me y'all were, y'all have to do that, right? They're flushing the hydrants that's done by your department annually, is that not true?
I think that's more the fire department.
Well, the chief said otherwise, so I I don't know.
Part of the water system. The fire departments typically do it because the water systems don't do it. They need to add it, they need to know the flow capacities and all of that, so they can put that into their I S O.
We'll have to have another.
Getting back to where I was going with that, we we've done other things to to try to find out where water loss is. We hired a contractor a couple of years ago that could, uh, had hearing. Capabilities, uh, you know. Ground piercing sonar or whatever it is, they can hear water leaks, they walk the entire system. They can identify a lot of them, repair a lot of them. So, we're investing money in trying to figure out where water loss going. And there's gonna be water loss, the state average is 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 about twenty percent. We're a little above that, uh, but we've got some aging lines and that kind of stuff. Well, like I said, if you if you know where water is going, if we get right, we get right numbers. And we can deduct a lot of that and that percentage.
So it's not necessarily that the amount that we are showing is that is is full water loss, it's just that we can't identify.
Not getting the data to identify.
The point is, the difference in what we sold and what we bought is not water.
How do they calculate that, Ken? Just curious, how do they calculate water loss?
Know where, okay, let me give you an example, if. If we have a million gallons of water that we buy and we sell seven hundred and fifty million.
Fifty thousand.
Two hundred, two hundred and, or yeah, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Two hundred and fifty thousand is the difference in those two, but if we know the the. Fire department used fifty thousand that month because they had a fire or whatever. And then we used another hundred thousand. Water department in flushing lines and stuff like that for new housing development areas. We can deduct that hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
And we only got a, we've only got a ten percent water loss at that.
Yes, so the thirty-two percent that you guys are reporting is after those deductions.
It's after the deductions that we know of.
All the information we have shows that the major losses are. A whole. Thousands of little bitty leaks. Most of them are in that line that runs from the main to the water meter. And we have some areas of the city where tho- those lines are failing. And that, and we have priority list and that one they're attacking.
So af- after that. After the contractor came in with those listening devices to listen for water leaks and identified. We hired our own crew, crew, and we purchased our own listing devices, and now we have a crew that goes out looking for water. Either they're out looking for for water leaks or they're repairing water leaks that they found. And that was the additional crew that Martin talked about that we may be putting on staff next year.
Oh, we were supposed to do that about a year or two ago when Mr. Warren was on council. And, uh, I I thought that was part of a rate increase we did, you know, the hiring crew, three. Hire three more or or on top of that.
Did put on that crew.
Okay, alright, that crew is alright.
About adding to it.
Okay, alright, got you, for clarity. So the next area I guess we have is council, water, sewer commission, relationship and authorities. So, uh. I know it's been discussed a couple of times about getting the minutes on the website, agendas on the website, recordings on there. And the question is, what is the plan regarding that? I know I looked at the website just before this meeting and it's still not there, and we, you know, if you need help with it, we can help. Get the minutes on it.
There, I don't know why it would be.
I looked at five o'clock, there was nothing on there.
Well, I.
Skip that question.
That person is going to do that. They've got all of the data. All of the, the start loading it. And we're still having to figure out. We're gonna get the the minutes, the entire commission packet, minutes, so forth, on the web, you know, on our website.
And again, I just want to extend it off for help, because we had that website, uh, and Nicole is probably listening. But, you know, she's willing to help any way we can, I mean, you know, if you need help in the in the recordings, you can't put them on. Like it'll take up too much space. Want to do a YouTube, I'll I'll be happy to help you with that, because like this recording right here, this will end up on YouTube, uh, tomorrow morning, so. I'll I'll be happy to help, you know, we will help any way we can. And if you need us, we're here for you. And then I guess the other one here, well, they guess is, uh. We just want to make sure we have meetings, uh, you know, concerns that. Residents or developers anybody brings to the meeting, uh, without concerns, so sometimes I feel like they're getting negative feedback. And I'm not sure how we can correct that, I mean, I know public comment is public comment, I mean, it's not really a question and answer session, but. Yeah, I I kind of feel bad for our developers, because you know, they do have lots and lots of money in this stuff, and and. I know everybody's working together to move everything forward, but maybe just a little, I mean, I I don't know, it's just this observation. I don't know if we want to add to that, or.
Yeah, that was.
If you go to all the meetings with me.
That was actually my question that I presented for this. I've noticed in the year that I've been there, there's been some. Some back and forth, um, with commissioners, I know. I'm passionate about things that I'm that I'm involved in, and so sometimes I come across very passionate and people are like, hey, you don't have to be mad at me, I understand that. It's not personal. But when developers are coming in and they can't get answers anywhere else, and they're being told that they can't get a response, I think there's certain things that should be. Given a response, I mean, i- if if it's a general answer later on, if it's not directly at that person, say, hey. You know, we are gonna give dates, we're gonna give information, there's gotta be a way to communicate, communication is key, communication is key in what we do. He and transparency through the residents, um, that's a big word these days, and it's an important word. Um, and it shouldn't be taken lightly, um. I've I've witnessed it, and it's, you know, we've had state representatives in there and just completely flabbergasted. By by the professionalism, and I'm not saying it's every single time and it's every single commissioner. But it's something that that definitely needs to be addressed. Um, we have to hold ourselves in a professional manner, I mean, I I just feel like that that is, that is our. Minimum requirement for the roles that we're in. I just, I just ask that we find a way to to bridge the gap and and build relationships and sit at the table with each other, even if we don't agree.
Yes, I'd like to just provide feedback to that.
Sure, absolutely.
We had a comment last from Mr. Anderson, that said, that meeting was the best run meeting he'd been to in a year and a half, is is that accurate?
At that point.
Yes, yes.
Minutes later. I wanted to retract it.
I understand.
Right, up to that point, I I told the board, I appreciated the spirit of cooperation that they provided.
So a few, a few meetings back, Chairman Castillo said, hey, we're gonna reframe how we do public comment. And that was really to bring order to our meetings, because the public comment period was getting out of order. And so that was causing some of the concerns, at least that's my opinion. And so I feel like our our shift in how we approach public comment is actually gonna be a benefit.
I I I agree, I I feel like that meeting was held very good and professionally. Um, and nothing against developers, but when we have residents actually show up and are doing their. Their due diligence and their work to and have questions and and maybe they don't understand, it's like my question and I was like, I saw eyes, like, what in the world is she saying? Um, that will happen, you know, and I think it's important, if you don't have the answer. Not to say, hey, you need to sit down, or no, you don't know what you're talking about. Or by the answer, even if it's outside the meeting, I I think it's important to do that, so that so the residents feel like they're actually heard and seen and valued as well.
I think the, uh, the public facing stuff that you guys are gonna provide, hopefully on your website for minutes and recordings and all that. We're only gonna help you guys as much as us, because we all know that there's increases coming. Water, sewer, all of that, I'm sure is gonna be happening for the next several years, so the more information you guys can provide to the public. Give them better understanding and clarity why those increases are necessary. And it's gonna, I mean, selfishly, it'll take a little bit of heat off of us too, if they have that information in front of them, so, um, just. Food for thought.
That's right on that.
Yeah, sure. Relative to that, I'd like to give you a preview. Before the the staff has started to work on the twenty-sixth budget. And, uh, I have a little, I have a little list. Arkansas Highway one oh two project. We will have to find it, it's going to be about a nine to ten million dollar project, we'll only get about three to three and a half million dollars. It is, we'll get everything reimbursed except for three to three and a half million dollars, that three and a half million dollars. That we're gonna have to budget for. I can float that. With the revenues that, or the funds that we have. Okay. We have at least one major project. And we're gonna do early. We hopefully will get started before the end of the year. Uh, with those bond, you know, which will require bonded indebtedness of between nine or ten million dollars. Uh, that will have to be factored into, you know, whatever that bond is factored in there. Uh, the flow metering of the wastewater and. Building the model is under contract, however, we probably gonna have to, I'm expecting that we're gonna have to can. Continue that project, that's a lot of three hundred thousand dollars a year. Our program to attack unaccountable water loss. We probably will add an additional five hundred thousand dollars. To our contracted work, and if we add a crew, uh, that'll cost us another five hundred thousand dollars. Well, we also got to see personnel increase, I can definitely tell you that we're gonna be hiring another engineer. Next year. Those items are gonna have to be covered. By the rates of the system, of the system. So. It may not.
So on that, can I challenge you as the commission? Um, I think those are all.
I like that, yeah, that's my list.
Necessary, but let's put that in a one pager and then let's counter that with what are the benefits and the value that's gonna come to the city? By making these improvements, are we gonna bring more commercial, more cash registers, more sales tax revenue? Are we gonna be able to develop more property? So, I mean, it's easy just to spit out all of this that we're gonna have to buy, we're gonna have to buy, we're gonna have to buy, but. What's the benefit to Mrs. Smith across town when her water bill goes up fifty dollars? She needs to know that, and that's part of selling. Whole processes, you've got to get that information out to show these people, this is what we're doing, this is why we need to do it. And it's not just for today, it's for the future, so it's just communication, and I think all of those are valid things, but. The values, that's something. Does that make sense?
Thing about it is, we don't get revenue from the state, from the city either one. What we spend is what we can make. If we don't make, we can't spend. We've asked to do rates and some, maybe close when we get older, you think that for the council, they're gonna vote you down. Now, that's happened several times. You know, we we took it and and managed the rates for water. Water anyways, for his history, for year, now they're going up into big, like, like five, thirty cents, you know.
When it comes to those items, you guys are gonna have to put on a sales hat, and you gotta sell the value of the products that you're providing and why you need those upgrades and.
Yeah, I mean.
Wouldn't have to have any help for some of that stuff.
Yeah, and I would I would also like to make a point. Our revenue is what we earn from selling water and sewer. We have construction projects, we float a bond issue, that's paid with those revenues. There are a number of cities. In Arkansas, Oklahoma, and elsewhere. That major bond issues are paid for with sales tax. Thank you.
Bring the businesses in, so.
I mean, we're getting ready to have to spend money for decaters. And you know what, if we decide that goes far away with taxes, that's all that'll be funded, and I mean, we'll bond it out. We'll just bond it out, just about what it's gonna sound.
In in response to, in response to what you're saying, most of the stuff that you mentioned on that list right there. They provide additional benefit, that's the, that's to maintain status quo.
And that's due to poor planning over the last twelve years, so, I mean, we're. Said earlier, we're paying for the sins of the past, because we haven't planned to keep these up, so.
Not necessarily paying for this in the past either, what he's talking about right here is to maintain the status quo because of the. Increase in population that we're seeing every year.
What the things I heard today was.
It has nothing to do with planning, that has to do with the increase in calling.
But if we had planned ahead, we wouldn't be paying for the status quo, we would have had what we needed for now and we would be paying for the next five years.
Well, if you pay for it in the past or you pay for it now, I am six wing one half, there's any word toward it, so it's not gonna reduce, it's not gonna reduce the cost.
We've been very fortunate over the years, I'll say that, with growth, the growth has been enough to keep us above water. And you know, now we better get ready for it, because that growth's gonna slow down, till we get things ranged out. And once it slows down, sometime pretty hard to get back too, so.
I think, I think this is just my opinion, you guys can take it for what it's worth, but I think the city. On this side of the table, we're gonna have to take a close look at. Our projects that are coming to town and revenue that's that's gonna generate and. Not just go really with all that, we need to set that aside to support infrastructure. And potentially a wastewater plant in Decatur, uh, we need to be prudent with that money and not just say, oh, we got a surplus in our budget now. We need to start planning for the future on our side too, so it's not just all you guys.
Well, and as long as Centerton's in Bentonville School District, it's not gonna slow down till we max our space, I mean, that's the reality of it too.
And I, and I would like to point out, if you. North Northwest Arkansas Democrat Gazette today. City of Bentonville, at their city council meeting last night. In examination. Of a series of wastewater rate increases. Nine percent a year.
Next six years.
For the next six years.
It's always rate five percent, six percent.
Bentonville's water rates are.
They got the same article.
They doubled the water rates.
They were like.
Way behind.
That, on that paperwork we had, they were well below Centerton's water rates, well. On the, on the local cities that we, that we ran.
They were, they were behind what they charged per thousand gallons. But we had other programs that they added to it.
Yeah, anyway, there.
Springdale announced what, almost a hundred percent increase on theirs over a four or five year span, so, they're going up.
We're not going up complaining about Bentonville or anybody, or Centerton, and we, we need to do what we need to do, it's going side. It's gonna be a sad day someday for it.
I, and I'll also make one other statement. The world is in a water crisis. We're lucky to be in Northwest Arkansas. But the vast majority of this world does not have drinkable water. And all of the data says it's gonna get worse.
True in some parts of Arkansas.
Yeah, and. You don't have to go very far to the west either. But the point is. Thirty years ago. A meeting I was at. The prediction was that the next. The prediction was that the next major conflict will, will be over water.
I need to drink that water right now.
So, hey, last, last thing I have for this. Is this going forward? Let's just make sure we have a strategy, you know, clear and accurate relay of information. Regarding the growth of the city sewer collection system and capacity. And, you know, the more information we can put out, us to the city, which I think we do a pretty good job of, but. You know, more we can work together, you know, that was the whole purpose of today, just to. Educate the council, let them see where we're at, what's going on. Uh, because unfortunately, they all can't make the meetings and, and, yeah, and I get that. So with that, I did put a slide on here for public comment. I think we probably already took most of the comments during this, but I'm.
I think there's got to be.
There's one more.
Oh, that's alright, yeah. I just want to make sure if we had anything else that we missed, and I really just want to kind of keep you to what we were discussing tonight. Uh, come on up. If you want to have some public comment. Have any questions for us.
Yeah, I'm Taylor Sizemore.
So, would you like to make motion to go into public comment?
Moved.
Take it, call a favor.
Alright.
Could you say your name and address so he has it in a minute?
Taylor Sizemore, my address is a Bentonville address.
What is it? Go ahead and tell.
Forty Meadow Brook Circle.
Okay, go ahead, sorry about that.
So we have some farmland in the downtown area and up by two seventy-nine. And I just want to touch on one of your points of how you can plan for the future growth. And all you can do is take the existing land use map, take the maximum. Units per acre. And so do that. Y'all will never approve a budget that will actually grow to that pace. But at the same time, you have people. That are saying. Engineers saying that you're running at forty-eight percent capacity. And that should be enough. So on one side, you're saying we should. Chase growth, but on the other side, you should, like, the people before us should have done it too. You know, so, but the budgets will never get approved through city council planning for that. There's ways that can be done, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, and it's the regional strategy. I mean, this is a municipality, but this municipality is struggling from regional growth. They just happen to be within your boundaries. So if you get. Obviously, there's a, I was happy to hear that there's a initial solution for a two to three year, what's on the books now, that's amazing to hear. And I'm sorry, you guys, they're both all. But at the same time, you have to solve this problem. Chase the solution and go towards regional planning. You are not going to be able to solve this problem because you don't have the water in Centerton city limits to dump it. You can't even treat it if you needed to, and that's why Arkansas didn't prove it first. We don't have the outflows. It has to go to a regional strategy. And hopefully somebody's talked to Beaver Water District. They're coming through Centerton in the coming months. And they're digging the ditch all the way to Decatur. So.
Two times, that's two times.
Not being, not being water.
But we're on ahead of what this is. It's a regional strategy.
That's what we got, if we have sun water.
And if you step it over. One length of pipe and down one length of pipe, you can cure that ditch and have another sewer line coming from the highest point in Centerton. All the way to Seaver Road. The state won't allow you because you're a municipality, but you start shifting your thought process towards.
If you put a water sewer line in the ground. There's a minimum distance between the two of them.
Yes, sir.
Quite large.
Thirty and fifty foot. I'm just saying, it might be wise to reach out to Beaver Water for you. He's already bringing a pipe through, he's already headed where you want to go from the highest point in Centerton. All the way down to Decatur, so. I just ask that maybe somebody chases that from, you're going to have an open ditch. And it was mentioned that the north side and the west side have a.
We've got an eighteen inch force being. That will take easily serve fifty thousand.
Yeah, so the next part of this regional thing that I'm saying is. Do we know how much Decatur can grow before it's capped? Because it has an X amount of water from that also. So it has to be a dual strategy, it has to be at the state level. Have to engage. Beyond what this city of Centerton. City of Centerton can't solve sewer problems, they're relying on two others. And one of them during this meeting mentioned that they are already thinking about going regional. So with y'all's participation and revenue going to them, that much easier. Bentonville, last night in the meeting in the hole. Just said that the budget that the city council approved for ninety-eight million is gone. And now they need fifty-five million more in order to build their plan. So when you're just throwing those numbers out there, you're in the hundreds and thousands of millions. And for ten million plus the fees to your citizens. You're right there to NACA who's already engaging. And NACA is also limited to Sage Creek and how much they can put in. So when Decatur, NACA, this region itself is limited on the water that's around here that it's falling into. Which goes to his point of the drinking water. It's precious. And the regional strategies are the way that I think this should be handled.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to talk about, I hadn't said enough, what was your name? Taylor, Taylor, that's. I need to talk to you at some point.
You're starting.
I'm sorry. Creek Engineering. Something that Taylor said and.
He used to be here every month. For years.
Yeah, I know, but then I got tired. One of the things that was said, that Taylor said is that you could put a sewer line in the same trench that you can in the water line. And the response back was, no, you can't. But actually, what Ten, what Ten State Standard says, and the Health Department is always quoting Ten State Standards. Has done in like, thinking, what was the date, Tim?
Nineteen.
Early nineteen hundreds, hadn't changed much, okay? They actually have, and that's where that hundred gallons per person per day comes from. We're dealing with vitrified clay pipes rather than plastic pipes. Now, we still have some vitrified clay pipes in the dirt, we do. But that's not what we're putting in the dirt. Okay, so again, the mindset, but the reaction was we can't put sewer and water in the same trench. Do you know Ten State Standard still today allows the benching? Of water and sewer in the same trench, as long as you have the vertical separation. When you have special constraints horizontally, that you can't get ten feet of separation. So the initial response was, we can't do that. I call bull. We don't want to do it. We, we would rather sacrifice the dirt horizontally to make our lives easier.
Times one thousand.
Yeah. And take developable property away from developers or remove the ability to put in street trees. Because we're not flexible. Because down the road, it might make it harder on us. There's no workability, and I'm, I'm saying that, and I, Lorraine will testify, I love Fort Worth City. Okay, and I, I have enjoyed the personnel over the years. I've had my struggles with Southern. Brandon and I will have to fight it once while, it's okay. But to not come at a problem and say, how can we solve it? But only respond back to the design engineers on behalf of the developers, no, that's not the way we do it. I'm so sick of it. There's not an ounce of workability to try to resolve a problem. I, I, I exaggerate, there is. But it, it's not like it needs to be. But again, pick your battles. If you want to battle the Health Department, great, I would love to see somebody say, you keep on telling Ten State Standards, why are you picking and choosing rules out of it? Okay? And I, I love y'all's questions, I love what you're doing, because you're drilling down on a hard topic. But. There should have, I mean, Fayetteville, we laughed at Fayetteville years ago about issuing a moratorium. Over this very issue. We, we needed a moratorium two years ago.
Anyone else? Once, gone twice, someone like to make motion to close public comment? Make a motion. And second.
Second.
Call a favor.
Alright.
Alright, last thing I've got on the agenda. And Lorraine might help me with this one. Request for Professional Community and Economic Development, which is a PC, PCED certification. Uh, Lorraine wrote a very detailed explanation of the request. Uh, this is a, actually a three-year project. It's done. Some time and effort, and tested the end of it. Made a nice outline, uh, went to some tails. And what we're asking for is a two dollar an hour certification paid for this. They're going to need that.
If you have questions, I'll get it, okay.
Hope you guys all head out, thanks for coming and.
Thank you.
You very much.
He looks like. Any questions? Would you like to make a motion to approve this?
So moved.
You want a second?
Second.
On a favor?
Alright.
You want to pose? Thank you. Kayla's on here, so she thanks you too.
Oh, yes, congratulations.
She was on there, I know she's still there, but she was there. Alright, so with that, something to make motion to adjourn.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations, Kayla. Do we have a motion? Should we have a second?
Second.
On a favor? As long as you can stay.